All right. Calling to order the Wednesday, May 12th Budget Work Session of the 38th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker.
Here in Berkeley.
Councilmember Blanchard.
Here in Berkeley.
Mayor Protem Dean.
Here in Berkeley.
Councilmember Gavin.
Here Berkeley.
Councilmember Henan.
Here Berkeley.
Councilmember Price.
Here in Berkeley.
Mayor Trebrack.
Here in Berkeley as well. First order of business is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Gavin with support from Councilmember Price. Are there any changes today? All right, seeing none. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henan.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Trebrack.
Yes. At this time, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have now come to Public Comments, a section of the work session. You may present your thoughts on any issue today. Councilmembers will again not engage you in discussion. If you have something that needs to be addressed by a member of city staff, please email the clerk at clerk@berklee-mish.net. If you would like to comment and you are at the meeting, please raise your hand. This is now live, so I'm not going to tell you to dial in. But if you're trying to dial in, the number is 312-626-6799. You'll be recognized by either name or phone number. When you speak, please state your name and city of residence. And remember, you will be limited to three minutes. Nobody knocking right now, Stan?
No, nobody in the waiting room.
Okay, we'll give them just a couple more seconds. Okay, not seeing anybody else coming in. We will close public comments and we will move on to this evening's order of business. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read the items on our agenda?
One, Budget Work Session, matter of a discussion of the proposed 2021-2022 City of Berkeley budget. A, City Clerk. B, Building and Planning. C, Parks and Recreation. D, Public Works. E, Finance and Treasury. F, Court Building Fund. G, Debt Funds. H, Capital Improvements. I, Fringe Benefits Fund. And J, Public Safety Pension Fund.
All right, well, we will begin our work session. And Ms. Mitchell, you have the honor of kicking us off this evening. Which page would you like us to start on?
Please turn to page 12 or page 11 on the PDF version. First of all, the only change, changes from last year's budget are under part-time employees. The part-time clerk staff, which is a seasonal staff, I'm proposing a $1 per hour raise. I just think many of the lessons we've learned in the 2020 election cycle, it's that good help should be rewarded and retained, definitely. So we appreciate that. And then the second change is that this fiscal year's budget is based on two elections. Last year was based on three. At this point, we have one planned election on November 2nd, 2021. But we need to be fiscally prepared for two elections as we do serve two school districts, one community college, one ISD, and many other entities that at any time could place a proposal on the ballot. And that is it for page 12. Does anyone have any questions? Yes.
Other question I've got is I noticed we've got two part-time here on yours and two part-time yesterday for the City Hall. And I'm wondering if these have been coordinated to make sure that there's no overlap in duties here. It's probably more of a question for Matt than for you.
Well, I do know the part-time treasury, that has been something that has been consistently in the budget. And that is only utilized if, for example, Phyllis Brown, the Treasury cashier, would sub for Gina, since Gina is technically, she's had part-time deputy clerk, part-time treasury. So that is just a fund for that, which was not utilized last year. And then the part-time clerk staff is seasonal.
Yeah, we do have somebody now that's, I apologize, we had a miscommunication that we discovered today between a couple of different departments. We did bring on a, what we call a generalist, an administrative generalist position. This position is a part-time individual that started off working in the clerk's office. But her scope has expanded now to where she would work, generally speaking, throughout any department that would, that need another person. But, you know, that's not necessarily justifying a full part-time position or a full-time position. So one of the things that we were going to bring up this evening was along the same lines of our Facilities Director, Housing Debt in the City Manager's Office, as part of the coordination, Councilmember Blanchard, that you brought up. We would have that person added as a part-time staff member to the City Manager's budget. We thought it was in the, personally, I thought it was in the clerk's office. So I apologize that it was not discussed last night. But we continue to coordinate these positions and make sure that this individual is of service to all different departments, even though they are right now primarily based out of the clerk's office.
Thank you.
Bridget, go ahead.
Thank you. And I'm just interested to know how you came to the conclusion that these positions were necessary. I'm not saying they're not. I'm just curious as to the, you know, how you got from A to B.
Sure, we had this person start, this particular individual started out as an intern for us and then worked through the elections and helped in the clerk's office close out the election all the way up through even last month. Mark and Victoria and their previous community did have a position they called a floater. And so we modeled that position off of this one, knowing that we had several different departments that got busy at different times throughout the year, but still needed somebody to help them sort of get over that hump. So we sort of, they were able to draw on their previous experience and say, well, here's what we did, and in this case, Clausen, here's why it works so well. It seems like we're seeing the same issue here and we potentially have a solution. So that's kind of the, generally speaking, the process of how we came to deciding that this position was worth making a request to council for.
And so when you say busy at different times, because things, the things are up and down, I understand that. Is, how is the, how's that being measured? I guess is what I'm interested in as well. Is there a metric or is it a, I'm just interested in the process, I guess.
Yeah, we're admittedly still building out that process. In fact, we were meeting probably tomorrow or sometime early next week and developing like a, a metric, a form, that kind of thing, and how to measure that. In this particular situation, the next posting for that person would be Parks and Rec. The reason we're ramping up there is because lighting copper tasks are coming online. So this is our first chance of really testing it in full with a department outside of City Hall. So there'll be some lessons learned there. But it's really going to be basically a department head realizes an upcoming need and will make a request of the manager's office or the clerk's office that this person be embedded with their departments. Again, I apologize, we're still working on the measurables portion of it, but it's going to be department-driven is our thought right now.
Okay, so.
I think we met Public Works, sorry, I just wanted to check that.
Public Works, my apologies.
So it will be need-driven based on metrics that you're coming up with. So this position would serve various departments. It wouldn't be just a one department position.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we didn't like the term floater, we've dubbed it Administrative Generalist.
Okay, yeah, I can go with that.
So I have a couple of questions then. Well, first of all, my understanding is what happened in the clerk's office, when you guys started with all the absentee ballots, didn't that cause quite a need to have someone else in the department to help? Wasn't?
In the clerk's budget, the part-time clerk staff, that's 280 hours in seven weeks. That's a seasonal employee just to help us assist during the elections. We have 13,180 registered voters now. We have 5,323 voters on the permanent absentee list, so we have to send them all applications. So the, just the volume for Gina and I to handle that. So the part-time clerk staff in my budget, that is for 280 hours just to help us process absentee ballots and, and make it through the election.
Okay, then my other question, or my question was, is this budgeted correctly net? I know there's some in your department and some here, is this how it should be?
We'll be making an adjustment to that, to house that part-time generalist position in the manager's office.
Okay, then, further questions on that page?
Yeah.
If I could, so are, do we have a, I know we reviewed the City Manager's Office budget yesterday. Was there a gap, something we are missing that needs to be added? Or was that, so we were missing something? So what's the rough order, how much that's going to be added to that office?
I, we know we were looking at those calculations, I don't have them. It'll be 25 hours a week at the existing pay rate now, but I don't have, I don't have that number developed just yet. But we do, we will bring it forward and call it out to you guys. I was hoping to get, doing some side calculations right now on, on that. And I was going to address it later, but Councilmember Blanchard's question offered the perfect opportunity to start the conversation, but I will have that information for you just a bit.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, looks like seeing no further questions. We could move on to page 13 or 12 on the PDF version. The first item note is the rabies vaccination clinic. I suppose hope springs eternal on this one. I'm hoping that, you know, as we are allowed to have more events and with, we would need to be able to secure a veterinarian to donate their services. You know, I would love to bring this back, so leaving it in the budget, I think it would be a great service to provide to the residents to hold our rabies vaccination clinic. The next item is under Consultant MuniCode. I just wanted to point out that I'm currently working with MuniCode and Mr. Alyssica and Ms. Mathis regarding increasing our online presence of our code of ordinances and phasing out the paper versions of the updates. Just keeping that, of course, to what we must maintain. But we're currently working on that to offer more enhanced experience for employees and residents who are looking to search through our code ordinances. And then in the next, I would be Contractual Services. I'm proposing a pay increase of $10 per election worker. I'm kind of going along with the sentiment earlier about rewarding our workers. I think it's important to stay competitive, but also to acknowledge the increased responsibilities that the election inspectors have. And Lori, there is a typo, I apologize for that. For the co-chairman, that should be $190. And that is correct in the final calculation, that's just the typo on the one number of 170. That should be 190. But the total calculation is accurate. And then the last item on that page would be Oakland County Programming and Canvassing and AV Board. That is an increase of $2,000 from last year. And that is because, that's the estimate the county has provided to me for the cost of processing our absentee ballots. It would be $1,000 per election and that would be for local elections only. So, you know, since there's only our city, city races on the ballot, we would bear 100% of that cost. And that is what I have for page 13. Does anyone have any questions? We can turn to page 14, or that would be 13 in the PDF version. I don't have anything of note on this page. There's really no changes other than nominal routine expected increases of expenses. Does anyone have any questions on page 14?
Yeah, I have a quick question on that one. Just a little bit of confusion, I think, preventive maintenance for touch writers and warranty for touch writers. If they're under warranty, are they all under warranty? What's preventive maintenance? It looks like it's almost as much as the, as a warranty.
We do have maintenance that is not covered under the warranty. The warranty is more toward parts or breakages if there's a malfunction. But the heart does charge for coming out. They often contract, and they do like the contract with the election source who comes out and they do routine maintenance and then we do pay election source for that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then next we can turn to page 15, or that would be 14 in the PDF version. The only change on this page is under Equipment for Storage Units for Election Storage Room. I have a cost of $572 and that is for some storage cabinets for our main storage room. We're just in desperate need of storage space with all of our many sealed ballot bags of absentee ballots and our PPE. And we just, we need some containers and storage units to put all of this inside. And that concludes my presentation. Does anyone have any questions?
Bridget, go ahead.
I see that you have animal licenses under BSNA. Are there any other ways that you utilize BSNA?
The clerk's department, well, we primarily utilize BSNA for that. We do use BSNA, but that is our responsibility to pay for that program, the animal licensing program.
Okay, thank you.
And I did want to thank, before I conclude, Mayor Trebrack and members of council for their continued support of the clerk's office and especially with, including, supporting our initiatives to make voting more accessible for all our residents. So thank you so much.
It's easy to support things that make voting more accessible, Victoria. It's probably not something that you're going to run into, this elected body that thinks that's a bad thing. So we appreciate you taking that initiative and giving us things to support. It's equally as important. Any additional questions before we leave the clerk's department for the budget? Okay, we will then move on to the next section, Building and Planning. Erin, where would you like us to begin?
Good evening, everyone. If we could start on page 45 on the PDF and 44 in the, in the document. Okay, so you'll see here, the first item is there's an increase for the full-time employees. This not only includes raises for Kim and Dana, the Building and Licensing Clerk, who've been doing an excellent job through, through the pandemic and getting us through with all of our projects, but also includes the, the addition of a third person in our department. We've been so busy the last couple of years and a third person would really help us to answer all the phones, get back to emails, and then do some of the other projects that have been kind of kept to the wayside. You know, filing and certainly helping out with research and facilitating large-scale projects. So we really feel that a third person would, would really benefit our department and the residents in our community. Moving down to Books and Periodicals. There were a number of updates to the Michigan Building Code, the Electrical Code, the Plumbing Code this year in 2021. So included a line item there to make sure that we have all of the updated, not only the books on file, but certainly the searchable PDFs for our inspectors, our building officials, to make things easier for them to, to service our residents and business owners. I've also included a line for next year as well, just in case there's a couple of books that overlap in the fiscal year. And then through Program Supplies, the inspection stickers, hangers, forms and printings. This is just a regular carryover item from last year. We've had a lot more inspections going on. So we need to make sure that we are up to date and keep all of, keep all of those in stock. So that's. Thank you. Excuse me, Erin, I'm just going to ask you, as I asked before, with the addition of a position, is there, can you tell me how you came to that conclusion? I mean, obviously, I know the building department's busy, but is there a metric? Was there, how did you measure that or how did you, I just would, I'm curious about your process? Yeah, so it was a matter of looking at how long certain things were taking. You know, we try our best to do our, to answer all the phone calls as they come in. And certainly, you know, sometimes we're on the phone with somebody or we're helping someone else. So, you know, we can't answer every single phone call at the time that it's done. And being close to the public has helped us with that. But when we do open back up to the public, there's going to be a lot more in-person, at-the-counter help. And so the number of voicemails that are left or emails that are sent, if we can get ahead of that at the top, it really frees up Kim and Dana from checking their email, answering the voicemail, answering the third phone call that someone did so that we can get on top of that. A lot of, a lot of the filing has, has been put to the wayside. So we have stacks of things that need to go into our filing system. And, and we also have, you know, longer-range projects. When Dan Hill was an intern, I know he was helping with scanning and documenting and putting all of our records in a searchable PDF and on, and on discs. And that, that really helps us when we're looking at the history of a project or things of that nature. So to be able to finish that project would be, would be incredible. So a third person could really branch out and help us over a multitude of tasks. And I appreciate that context and the justification for that position. And I know I've called your department before finishing up with, with our kitchen. And Kim and Dana are on it. And I, it just, the, the system that's in place on checking this, checking that, you know, I get it. And I, I also like hearing that you've, you know, you want to complete some projects that you had already begun and, and things. And so that makes sense and it will improve the overall function. So thank you. Thank you. Okay, so Program Supplies, I kind of covered that. Contractual Services, this is through HRC to continue the engineering. This was a carryover item from last year where we had money set aside for them to assist us with the Cummings Project. So we've kept that on here as well as other, other projects that may come about that we want their assistance and their advice on. So we fully intend to continue to move forward with some of those longstanding projects that we've had in the works. Any questions on that page? Okay, down to the next page. Okay. So with our Contractual Services, we still have McKenna in place doing our building inspections and our code enforcement. We have nuisance cuts on here. Those are for people who are unable or out of town or don't cut their own grass. So we have a service for, not a service, I shouldn't say, I shouldn't say that. So we, we encourage them, of course, to do their own. But if, if our code enforcement is unable to get them to comply, then we contact with an expert landscaping who's, we've been working with the last couple of years. They'll come out and do a cut and then we, we invoice for them and certainly charge an administrative fee. So it's not a service that we're providing, we discourage them to do that, I want that on the record. But it is there for those cases where it's, it's most needed in order to keep the, the community beautiful for everyone else. You'll see their advertising there, that was moved over last year to the planning because the planning department is the one who does all of the advertising. So that's where that should really be. Highlighted down a little further is Professional Development. So for the Building Department Clerks, we've included a line item here for them to get some needed trainings or attend webinars or additional certificates or things that would really help them, help them in their, in their role and their position. So we've allotted some money there for them to pursue that, that continued education. Any questions? That will close out the Building Department. One last, last question? No? So move down to page 67 on the PDF document. Okay, so highlighted there, we have the Planning and Zoning News and various texts. That's a carryover item, that's what we were doing last year. So that really helped facilitate and aided in some research that I was able to do over the past year for, not only for planning, but for City Council. So that way we can stay on top of best practices. As I mentioned last year, I came from a planning consulting firm who had a vast, extensive library and it was a wonderful resource to have, not only for myself, but it's available for Planning Commissions, zoning board of appeal, City Council. So if there are things that you want to brush up on, certainly, you know, it's available for everybody and they're always fun to read. But I'm kind of a nerd that way. Program Supplies, so we have here nameplates. Last year, we started a, a new design for the nameplates for when we have in-person meetings, when we will have in-person meetings. And at first, they were just going to be for the new members that were coming in. But, you know, this creates kind of a weird visual for people that you have a couple of people who have the new ones and then the people who've been on it for 20 years still have the old, traditional, classic style. So we want to make sure that they all look uniform and that everyone has the, the new, up-to-date, pretty one. So we've included some money here, not only for 2021, but also in 2022, in case there is some people vacating their positions and we have new people. The public hearing signs, those were started last year. So we still have a whole bunch of those from zoning board of appeal and planning commission. But we want to keep some money in the budget for replacements. Sometimes people forget that they are the property of the city and they end up throwing them away or getting lost or, you know, they keep them as a keepsake. I don't know, but they, they get, they, sometimes they don't come back to us. So we want to make sure that we have a little bit of money built in for replacing. And then the business licensing material, this is something that we have been working with the Building Department Clerks and the Licensing Clerk as a better way to welcome people into our community. So once they go through the business licensing process, then we can present them with a nice, you know, a business license for them to hang at their, their new establishment, their new business that is uniform, that is welcoming, certainly have maybe, maybe the maximum occupancy. I'm sure you've seen those other places, but something that looks nice and is. I'm sure you've seen those other places, but something that looks nice and is kind of a keepsake for them to show off at their new business. And then down at the bottom, we have here memberships. So MAP group membership for the planning commission, for the director. This kind of carries over to the next page, but I want to stop there and see if there are any questions on this page. Okay. So moving down here, we have certificates, memberships for MAP through APA, and then opportunity for me to get the AICP certification through the American Planning Association. Contractual services here, we have the zoning ordinance, the technical review. That will be taking place as soon as the master plan is done. Carly Wortman is finishing, as you know, is finishing up that master plan process, so we're in full into draft mode. And so as soon as that is done and adopted, then we really need to look at our zoning ordinance and find out where are the holes, where are the inconsistencies, where are the things that need to be fixed? And, you know, that's something that certainly can be done in-house with staff, but it will take much longer. So we have budgeted here some monies for them to do it, so that way it can be done much faster, and we can get those ordinances turned around and adopted to serve our residents. We've also included the entire zoning rewrite, so that way they can implement the the changes that there were identified in the technical review. Also budgeted some monies here for meeting minutes. This is something that I do both for the planning commission and the zoning board of appeals. The DDA has their own person who takes the minutes and writes them all up, and it's a wonderful service that they have. So having someone who could do that for us, for the planning commissions and appeals, would certainly free up staff to do other things. So I've consulted with a couple of other communities that utilize this, and prices range all over the place. So we started here with, as just a base to see where we could go forward. Advertising, the public hearing notices, we have an uptick here for that, because we are doing a lot more. We're going to be doing the entire zoning ordinance updates, as well as a lot of notices for the marijuana businesses, if that's, you know, when that finally runs its course. So we'll be doing a lot more public hearing notices through the newspaper, as well as mailings and to the property owners. Also included some monies here for engagement sessions. This is meant for the advertising of our work sessions and any other kind of engagement sessions with the community, so that way we can get as much public response and input as possible for future projects, such as the DDA guidelines and whatever else we come up with in the next year. Anything left on that page? Any questions? Okay. Moving down to professional development, Planet Zen has, is a website and a subscription. They lead a lot of webinars. Some of them are free, but a lot of them are, you know, cost some money for that service. And this is a wonderful opportunity for planning commissions, zoning board of appeals, city council, or any advisory boards, however we want to work it, to get some additional information in the planning and zoning realm of their choice. So, or community development realm of their choice. So it also facilitates and makes things easier for our planning commission and zoning board of appeals members. As you know, there is a continuing education requirement for their for their service on these boards. And so, you know, with their work schedules, their life schedules, their commitments and otherwise, having a subscription like this will allow them to take an online webinar whenever they have the free time. So they're not beholden to MAP or SEMCOG or any other agency for the time and date that they're going to do it, and they have to change their schedules accordingly. Also budgeted additional funds for the MSU Citizen Planner Course. There are a couple of individuals whose terms are up this year, and we don't know how many of them are going to be coming back, so we build in some funds here, just in case everyone vacates their their positions, and then we have the funds built in for them to, for the new members, for their training. Then there's just conferences, you know, continued education. We just built in some general planning and zoning workshops, because we can't plan for everything. Sometimes things come up through other agencies or other platforms that sound interesting, so we can't can't plan for everything, but we certainly want to make sure that we have given every opportunity to planning commissions, zoning board of appeals, city council, for them to go and learn about what they want to. Any final questions?
Any additional questions? Or, Erin, regarding building and planning at this point? You've done a wonderful job, Erin. Oh, no, never mind. I'm sorry. You did not do that wonderful job. Steve ruined it. Steve, go ahead.
Well, on that note, no, actually, I was going to continue to add on the praise of positive accolades, contrary to public opinion here, and say, Erin, it's a terrific job that you and the team do combine in both departments. Absolutely amazing work. And, you know, again, special kudos. You were at the DDA meeting this morning and did a great job representing the city and the initiatives that are on underway. You were on point and knew what you were doing and represented the city very well with that board. And so, yeah, my intent was to add to the accolades here, and thank you for the great work you're doing. This is certainly a very reasonable budget. I appreciate the notion of the various, you know, training initiatives that you've allocated for. I think that's really smart, and the certifications are important to stay on top of things, right? Because it's always a moving target, and there's always new ideas and approaches and best practices. And I celebrate the way that you and the team, or you encourage the team to to leverage those to make Berkeley even a better place than it already is, which is hard to do. So, thank you.
And just to finish that and wrap that up, the investment in personnel, in level of service, is also something that we've seen in a number of departments right now, and something that we are, you know, obviously with this budget, striving to improve the level of service and efficiency with which we're able to react and interact with our residents when they need things. So I certainly appreciate the thought that went into those conversations that we just had. Well, thank you, Erin. You are officially off of the hot seat. And we will move further into the undercard. Teresa, Parks and Recreation is up next.
Evening. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for having me, everyone. Certainly, I want to say before we start, like everyone, but probably a little bit more, you know, our budget continues to be a little bit of a moving target. We're a little more certain than we were when we met a year ago, but because so much of what we do is based off of what we're able to do, and I'm excited to talk to you about sort of how we pivoted after we met last year and how we continue to pivot. But, you know, there's still a lot that, you know, as we've talked about at council meetings, there will be some updates in June and those last budget amendments. And I think the same will happen next year, but I just wanted to say that before we get started. So we're going to start on the PDF on page 136. And you're going to see revenues there. I want to point out two things right off the bat. So the state grant funding that's projected for this year, well, we are, I'm happy to say, as of today, we are in the restoration phase of Oxford Merchants, still to be a fully named park, which means they're doing all the leveling, grading, seeding, and all of that work. That should conclude probably Wednesday or Thursday of next week, and then the park will be open for play. So all the major actual work is done, and now we are in the restoration phase. That grant money will either come in this year or next year. We'll adjust based on when we know, obviously, because the way the DNR works is a little bit different. We've kind of pushed it out every year. The other thing I want to point out is that the revenue for 2022 and 2023 is a planned revenue. It is not guaranteed. I do plan to apply for additional. I'm not sure why, but, I mean, I know why, but it's a little crazy just coming out of this one. But we do plan to go for additional grant funding for the work that we plan to do at JC Park, which includes making those pathways accessible, adding restrooms and updating that pavilion, as well as doing a fully accessible and inclusive playground there. It's extensive work. It's expensive. You'll see it budgeted for, but I do plan to ask for grant funding for that. That will be applied for April 1st of 2022, so that's why you see it in that following year. Hopefully, we'll be successful, and then it'll probably get pushed the way that this is. But we do really want to continue to do big projects and go for big things, and to try to alleviate some of that expense to the city, the state grant funding. And having been through the process, almost finished with the process, I have a little bit more understanding, and I'm hopeful that it will be even more successful the next time around. Any questions there? Any questions on Oxford Merchants? Feel free to ask them now, or I'll continue. Okay. All right. So you're going to continue to see the revenues. What you'll see in all of our accounts, as you do every year, is where the revenue falls, the expense falls. The expense will, for these programs, you'll see the individual pages is less than the revenue. We do our 70/30 contractual split with a contractor that teaches the programs, or does the camps get 70% and we get 30%. I am happy to say that we will be running a summer day camp this year. It will be, obviously, look very different and feel very different, which we've let all of our parents know. It is running at Angel Elementary School this year, because Anderson is doing construction. So we were able to work with the school district to get into Angel Elementary. We will have either a max of 80 kids or 100. We're hoping for 100. Honestly, right now, part of the issue is the staffing, because of the ways that we have to do the pods and staff and staffing. I know in a lot of places for part-time employment is very difficult right now. We're bringing a lot of our counselors back. We're just having trouble getting new counselors. But we are, we are running summer camp. We have 34 kids that are registered for the entire eight weeks, and then we are now registering weekly and filling up those slots very, very quickly. So happy about that. We have COVID policy in place and will, again, look very different. The expenses are much lower, because we're not doing field trips at this point. We're calling, we're doing what we call in-house field trips, where we're going to bring people to the kids, you know, whether it's an animal performer or insects or something cool like that. So we'll be bringing them to the kids and then also going to local parks. But a lot of expenses are lower, and we're excited to be doing that. Any questions on summer camp? Okay. I'm not going to go through every single individual program. I typically don't. I mean, you see them listed from dance to pillow polo, girls' basketball. Again, a lot of these, we anticipate, will be running in the next budget year, at what point that is. We're hoping for the fall. As of right now, we are running a number of classes outdoors. We're running karate. We're running zumba. We're running yoga. Any class that we're running, dog obedience, we max out in every dog obedience class. We started all of that last summer and last fall. We basically flipped our building where we could, inside out. We have virtual chair yoga, and we're doing pretty much anything we can outside of the building. We'll probably continue that through the summer, since the weather is nice. And then, obviously, we're hoping that we can bring people back in the fall. Any questions on any of these programs that are listed under revenues right now? Obviously, you see Dream Cruise, Summer Fest as well, and our miscellaneous programs, which basically it's always kind of just globbed certain programs together. Some of them are listed individually. Some of them are in this miscellaneous. I think we talked about adjusting that for next year, so you can kind of see them all laid out. Right now, Dream Cruise, we plan to run it. How it's going to look, how it's going to feel is still up in the air in terms of doing merchandise, that sort of thing. All come to council before we purchase merchandise, like I do every year. So before that happens, there'll be a conversation on that happening. And if we don't, then obviously that revenue will fall, but the expense will fall as well. Summer Fest and Winter Fest, we do have a number of community groups that want to sponsor still the events that we're running for summer. We are running again COVID-safe Summer Fest events. We've got several outdoor movies, things that people can do in a safe manner and spread out and all outside. We did run a number of outdoor events in the fall, really well-attended, really masked, and in a way that we felt like was safe and that people were happy to be able to come to. Any questions on this first page, on page 136, before I move on? 137, again, continues. Park rentals, I will say, I'm looking, I have a list in front of me on my desk of the park rentals, and this is the Pavilion Park Shelter, Pavilion Shelter at JC Park. It is rented. If anyone needs it, good luck. Almost every Saturday and Sunday, it is booked. The schools are using it during the week, all through June. And, I mean, it's just, it's constantly being rented. You know, people are looking for a place to stay. So we're happy that we have that in the future. I'm excited that we'll have more than that. And one of the things that I think will really continue is that, although the pandemic has forced people outside, I think people are going to stay outside. One of the things that we've talked about in the profession is, one of the ways that you can measure that your parks have been busier than ever, as our parks have been, is the garbage. We have to put more garbage cans at all of our parks, because all last year, we saw this, all this year, we have seen this. It's kind of a silly metric, but it totally is one that works. And, I mean, other than driving around and seeing people there, we run, have run a lot of our programs at our parks, but we have also know that a lot of businesses have been, you know, taken their programs and workout sessions outdoors, and we're happy for that. So park rentals, you'll see going up. Corporate donations is us working to get donations for Cruise Fest. And then the rest is transfer in, and that concludes 137 revenues. If there are no questions, I'll move on to expenses, but I'll give you a moment. Yes? Councilmember Blanchard, yeah. Oh, sorry, that's your job.
It appears that you, your part-time employees, they got a significant pay increase this year?
Which one are you looking at?
707.
Are you on 138?
It says I'm on 137.
Oh, okay. So, oh, you're on, okay, you're on the, I'm on the PDF. Okay. Yes, that is just one position. Yep. So I'm not adding any positions this year, but that is for our outdoor maintenance. One of the reasons that I decided to do that, Councilwoman Blanchard, is, A, we're still short. I have tackled, I've gone to every avenue I can to try to get more outdoor maintenance help. We have been unsuccessful. I know that we're not alone in that. I know that a lot of communities. And I wanted to match where the county was at with what they're paying outdoor maintenance. I thought that that would help us moving forward. I do have one awesome part-time outdoor maintenance person right now. He just started with us about six weeks ago. He is a Berkeley resident, and he has been fantastic. And I just, I really looked at the work that they do, and especially, they're doing it shorthanded right now. Our fields and our parks are busier than ever, as I just said, and I really feel that it was enough to ask for a significant increase for that part-time position, to, A, try to get them to return, and then, B, try to get more people. The amount of work that we're doing on baseball fields for Dad's Club, Mom's Club, and all of the high school programs is so extensive. I also have one of my full-time employees who last summer assisted us going outside, and I was very grateful for that. Unfortunately, he's having to do that again. Dan McMahon, who is our senior and program manager, is starting every morning early to set up the field, so that our full-time maintenance and our part-time can then follow. So that is matching what the county is offering for their outdoor maintenance, and I do feel that it was absolutely necessary.
That's a good baseline. Glad to hear that you consider their baseline. So thank you for that.
I'll continue then. Sorry, I'm on, so I'm on 138 PDF. That's 137 of the electronic version. So we just, that, what Councilmember Blanchard was mentioning was the park maintenance. It's going from 1071 to that 1351. I do have, we have three positions that have always been budgeted for the last several years for that position, different hours. Right now, I have one. We have had a posting up and in paper and online and a lot of different places. And I have begged many staff members on this call and not on this call to try to see if they know of anyone, because we really do need help. Sean's smiling, because he's one of the people I've begged. And unfortunately, we have not been successful. So right now, our full-time maintenance, Joe Nazioni, who does an absolutely smash job every year and has for the last three years, and our new part-time, Ernie Budzinski, and then Dan McMahon, who I mentioned, are handling all of Um, and uh, our new part-time Ernie Budzinski and then Dan McMahon, who I mentioned, are handling uh, all of the. Maintenance that's happening at the parks and the ballfields and the tennis courts. Um, so that is that, our office staff, this is partially, we also have office staff that comes out of the community center. Um, right now, we're not using any of uh, these, the fifty hours, um, it's not necessary. Um, we are not open in the evenings, um, which is where that comes out of. Um, then you'll see the, the lower number on the community center account as well. Um, we, right now, actually, as you guys all know Connie, she's working with us all this week, which has been fantastic, um, because we have a staff out. Um, our full-time office administrator, but right now, um, we do not have uh, evening hours, hopefully, hopefully in the future we will. Um, overtime is uh, something that we typically, we run with comp. Um, for our outdoor maintenance, um, also our staff when we have events, um, gets compensation, um, uh, compensation hours. Uh, the rest of our staff other than myself, um, but sometimes I do think that um, there is a need for overtime. Um, a small amount uh, as opposed to comp, uh, depending on what the work is or what the situation is. Um, but as you can see, we haven't actually used that um, this year. Rest of the, we'll go down to office supplies, again, um, keeping the numbers for a lot of uh, what we do in terms of office. Um, the same, not asking for a whole lot of increases there. Um, uniforms is one of those accounts that I did increase slightly, um, something that uh, we do offer our outdoor maintenance people is. Um, the ability to, obviously, we have them wear um, t-shirts that say, you know, Berkeley Parks and Rec, we pay for that, um, we allow them to get boots or whatever else they may need to make their work. Um, which is very physically taxing, easier. Playground athletic, again, that's the supplies that we use, the Dryzor, the chalk, things that we use to maintain the baseball fields. Um, we just had a request from one of the groups today that we needed more Dryzor, um, so uh, with wet seasons, it's always necessary, so that's that. There are no questions there, I'll move on to one thirty-nine or one thirty-eight. Okay. Um, so moving into, you'll see fuel oil, this is for all of our equipment. Um, and also vehicles that are not in our senior services. Um, so you'll see uh, obviously less for this year, the same for the coming years. Um, same thing with maintenance supplies and then equipment supplies. Um, everything is lower this year, trying to keep costs low as revenues are low and a lot of our budget. Um, we try to, we, we, we really try to mirror where the revenues are. Um, but trying to get back up in those coming years, knowing that we hope to be operating um, in a more. Typical time, um, same thing, seed plant tools, memberships and dues, um, those are pretty standard, you see those every year. Um, for the associations that we belong to. Um, the one thing I wanna point out on this page is custodial services, you'll see that number, it has been, it uh, is increased. Um, that is because I am asking the custodial services to begin once we have the restrooms open at Oxford Merchants Park, I wanna make sure that they stay nice. Um, so we will have our custodial services um, cleaning there each evening. Um, I wanna point out, just so you know, that one of the things that we did do that was an expense, but I think will really help us is those doors lock. Um, elec- electronically each night, or we can lock them from off-site, which is something I'm really happy that we decided to do. Um, the whole, a neighbor will lock it or something like that is not a really a good system, so. That's something that I'm happy we decided to do, but we will have a cleaning service there once those restrooms are open. So that number did increase for the following two years. Any questions on one thirty-nine or one thirty-eight? Before I move on? Okay, I'm gonna move to page one forty or one thirty-nine. Um, contractual services, you will see a couple of things in here and. Um, one thing, and I, I, I apologize Lori, I caught this later, I think that there was. I think where it says tree trimming, I think. We had talked about and 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 I apologize that I saw this late, but. I think that eighteen thousand nine hundred is supposed to be divided into the two years, we had talked about having some in twenty-one, twenty-two and some in twenty-two, twenty-three. Okay, so. The whole eighteen-nine, you're talking about the whole total for that? Yeah, we just need it divided, because I need it half in twenty-one, twenty-two and half in twenty-two, twenty-three. Okay. Thank you. Um, so a couple of things to point out, um, J Septic, Midwest London, those aren't normal, that's our, our rugs, we put porta-potties all over the city. Um, hoping someday we don't have to and we have permanent restrooms, but for now we don't. Um, I do have a line item in here that's new, um, I've been working with Derek and the tree board. So that we can put trees, add trees to um, Oxford Merchants Park. Um, so that it will allow for that in this coming year. Um, right now, we're looking at anywhere from nine to eleven trees added, at this point, in the future we may add more, but. Um, really trying to start slow and 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 get the park going before we, before we do too much, so you'll see that. And the tree trimming was something um, that I've talked about with Sean and with Hart, um, something that I think having a consistent um. Ability to trim the trees in the parks to keep them um, in good shape. Uh, throughout as we go on, um, is something that I think we need in the past. A long time ago, we kinda didn't do anything, and then I, I, a few years ago, I spent a. Big chunk of money to kind of freshen everything up, but I think having something consistent, um, to be able to prioritize um. The trees in the parks is, is important, um, similar to, uh, obviously a smaller number, but similar to how the public works does throughout the city um, on the streets. Um, so those, those are new in contractual services, any questions there? Okay, I'll keep going. Um, next couple light items are. Finance, insurance, um, telephone utilities, you will see a higher number for utilities, this again is due to Oxford Merchants. Um, both the splash pad and um, the bathroom there, the splash pad, because it is freshwater, it will not take a lot of electric. And we did budget for additional funding for, there's a separate item for water, which is the, the major um, cost. Um, a little, we, we did the best we could based on how we, how many gallons we know the splash pad offers and the hours. I worked with both the splash pad installers, also um, Sean Young, thank you for his assistance to try to get a good number. We gave a pretty high conservative number for that water. Um, I'm, I'm hoping that this, you know, it's kind of a learning curve, we'll see, because it really depends on how often it's used. Um, it, it won't be on if people aren't there, it's a touch sensor, and then obviously there are certain hours and there are certain months, um, so. Uh, bear with us on that, but we, we estimated high to start and then hopefully we can see where we're at um, for the, the following years. Um, building maintenance, again, every year it kind of ebbs and flows based on what the need is. Um, same thing with equipment maintenance, some years it's higher and some years it's lower, it depends on what we're doing. Then moving on to um. Page one forty-one or one forty. Same with vehicle maintenance, I actually just processed a number of invoices today, we had a bunch of work done on, on some of our vehicles. Um, Public Works does uh, the majority, does all of this work and ordering. Um, and and we obviously trust that process and and go from there. Um, professional development, um, similar to other departments, um, one thing that I'm always encouraging is webinars, conferences. Um, any sort of education that our employees can get, um, something that I'm hopeful that in the coming um, year or two is that Joe. He has been taking classes um, regarding playground safety, playground equipment safety, and I'd really like him to. Hopefully get certified when he feels comfortable to do that, we did um, have all of our playground equipment evaluated by um. A, a standards person about a year ago, um, so we know kind of what shape it's in now, but. Um, he's always, he's the one that has eyes on it every day, so that's something that I'm looking at doing. Um, furniture, typically this is to replace things, this usually isn't furniture, although I tell staff they can get stuff, but it's usually not office furniture, it's usually. Um, card tables or something to go in the community center, or something that's used for um, the community center is typically what you see in that, so. It's not listed out, it's pretty small, because right now we've kind of replenished a lot of the things we need, but I, I like to have five hundred in there in case there's. There's a need for something that will be used in the community center by the residents. Um, computer software, um, that is for our software registration program. Um, we, the, the. Program that we use now, Max Galaxy, is unfortunately um, not going to be available as of October of this year, so we are having to make a change. Um, we met with about five different companies that host this registration software. Um, some of the costs came in incredibly high, um, I mean, you can go. You can go sky-high and you can go much lower, we are going with a local company at a much lower cost than some of, I mean, we receive costs four or five times what we're going to go with. Um, it, it was good to go through their platforms to see what they offer, I think it's good to know. Um, and I think there was a lot of capabilities that they have that we wouldn't use now, but I think in the future. Um, I'm hopeful that we will need what they offer. Um, and it's good to know what's out there, um, what we could get, I just don't think that it's necessary right now for what our uses and for what our users. Um, uses, obviously we want it to, to work best for the people that are using it, but. Again, I think it's important to keep into context, um, finances and 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 where we're at right now with the building and the programs that we offer. Um, that concludes one forty-one, are there any questions on that? Okay. I'm gonna move to page one forty-two, one forty-one, so this is summer day camp. Um, you will see here, um, cost projected as best as we absolutely can, based on the fact of where we see either eighty or a hundred kids coming. For this year, but again, because camp runs. June, it's, it's partially this year, partially next year, and then, and then next spring, and we're certainly hoping by next spring it's running a little bit more normal. Um, which is where a lot of that revenue comes in, and then obviously the, the expense. Um, we do have notes for how the staff is laid out, um, in terms of their hours, we, we. Um, it will be a little, it will be a lot different this year, typically we run in. A A M camp and a P M camp, and then we run a day camp. Um, this year, due to COVID, we are not able to offer A M and P M, so we are only offering a full day. Um, and again, kids will be potted with a certain council or camp counselor as opposed to the camp counselors moving around. Um, some of that makes staffing easier for Scott Jenix, our program manager, who does a fantastic job of that, some of it makes it a little trickier. Um, so that is um, where we're at there, um, that's why you don't see A M and P M. Obviously, next year we hoping to run. Uh, program supplies and contractual supplies again are a lot lower uh, for this, based on uh, how we see summer camp running. Are there any questions on youth camp? Okay, I'm gonna run through the next pages pretty quickly, because again, they go with the, it's the expense for the programs, they go with the revenues. Um, expenses lower, revenue is a little bit higher. Um, so stop me if you want to, just throw up a hand and I'll try to catch it. Um, youth dance program, hope we get to bring them back, they're so cute. Um, pillow polo, that's one that we do run in-house, it's one of the only ones we do, hoping we get to bring that back, I used to play that in like the eighties, it's really fun. Girl, I won't give any anecdote on everything, sorry, um, girls basketball clinic, um, this is something that we run with the school district at the school. Um, we are hoping to be able to run that. Um, same thing with volleyball camp that we run at the school, um, it's, it's our camp, but we run it, um, we, we work with them on that, same thing with boys basketball clinic. Women's softball is the one rec, um, adult recreation program that we run in-house, the other two are uh, co-ed kickball and co-ed softball that we run with Detroit State in Play. So three nights a week, we do have adult leagues running, we think it's really important in recreation to have adult leagues. Um, and even if we are not running all of them, they are offered in the city of Berkeley, being played in the city of Berkeley, so hopefully our residents, and we know they take advantage of that, they run at Lays and B Field. Monday, Wednesday and Friday, um, Lays and B Field is a hot commodity, because we have the socks that are using that space for soccer games uh, on the weekend this year, which is new as well. Um, and, and then I know the school district's using it for their gym class as well, because they've got a, a lot of different stuff going on, so it's getting a lot of use, which we're happy about, so that's women's softball, which is running currently. Tennis, also running, we have a new instructor this year that starts um, next week, and we've had a lot of sign-ups for that, so we're really excited about that. Um, community center use, um, obviously this is where we see um, our employees, um, as I mentioned. Um, those expenses are much lower, although we have paid them throughout the pandemic, um, when they have not been working, but. Um, now some of them are coming back at different times, um, but those numbers are still um, lower. Um, and then we get to Dream Cruise, this is one where if we don't run it, we don't spend the money, if we do run it, um, we spend the money, um, and you, you see where. Um, I, I could see some of this running partially and some of these expenses not happening if we decide to do. You know, a parade, but not food and not merchandise or something like that, those decisions I think are still. Still need to be made down the road. Um, uh, but you'll see here, we're acting as if we are running it, we've budgeted for it if, if necessary. Um, any questions before I move on? Okay. Summer Fest, Winter Fest, as I mentioned, we are running it um, in a different fashion, um, but we, we are excited that we'll be able to. Um, see our community safely and um, offer them some events. Um, so now we are on page one fifty-four. Um, couple of things I wanna point out, playground supply, this is where we budget for um, mulch, uh, bark fiber, which is our surface that we use to replenish at our playgrounds. Um, you'll see our contractual services, this is where I said a number of the programs are laid out. Um, where you see the engineering account, I wanna make sure that I'm clear on this, that the. We found out, um, Erin, uh, myself and then, uh, sorry, Angela's our community development um, director and then our city manager. Um, Matt Baumgartner spoke with um, the county and we know now that we can use C D B G funds. Um, to update and improve the sidewalks in all of our parks, which is really, really exciting. Um, this, this is new for us, I think no one's more excited than Derek. Um, but um, we, we're excited about it, one thing I wanna really temper though is the amount of work that needs to be done and the amount that we gain from C D B G. Um, they don't exactly equal each other, right, so we are working with, I am working with H R C. Um, to prioritize what needs to get, uh, what we can get done realistically in what years. You know, for, for instance, Hot Lot, I think we can handle with one year C D B G funding, because it's really just that straight nine hundred, you know, linear feet path. Um, but all of our other parks, it will take holding on to funds at least for two years. Um, and and J C, honestly, I'm gonna try to go a different route, because I, I think it's so extensive and big, that I think we need to, to try a different route. Um, but if you walk in our parks, you know that they desperately need it, and this is about access, this is about. Improving that access and and I think it's really important and I'm excited that we can use that, but we do need, obviously, H R C's help with that and 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 their help prioritizing that. You'll also see engineering for parking lot, that is referencing the parking spaces on Cambridge, the off-street parking at Oxford Merchants Park that we are hoping to do. Um, in that second year. Um, and I'll talk a little bit more about that, um, and why we are uh, pushing that to twenty-two, twenty-three um, on the following page, so I am going to move. On to page one fifty-five, oh, Jack. Sorry, Councilwoman Blanchard.
Uh, yeah, uh, that seems awful high, sixty thousand dollars just for sidewalks, that doesn't include any of the parking areas or anything, parking areas of the following year? That seems like an awful high amount of money for sidewalks.
So it's not just. You, yeah, so that, so, uh, you know, I kind of, we haven't been given their proposal yet, so. I'm hoping that number will be lower, Jack, but without the proposal, I wanted to make sure that we had enough. And I think what will probably end up happening is partially some of it will be used this year, and then we can split it and partially can be used. In twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, I agree that it is high, I just, without having their proposal, I wanted to make sure that we had it covered.
You definitely got it covered, I'm sure, yeah, that's. Okay, thank you.
Um, page one fifty-five, you see the utilities, so you'll see, this is where I was referencing the water for the splash pad, we think that the number will be closer to about six thousand dollars a month. Um, which is obviously what we're hoping, um, but not knowing, again, I, I wanted to make sure that we had um. Enough, um, and um, our estimate is again, that it'll be closer to five or six thousand dollars a month. And then next you will see our capital in land improvements. Um, so, wanna talk about all of it. Um, I will, and I'm happy to answer questions, so a couple of things. Um, one of the things that we wanna add is um, a toddler play area at Oxford Merchants. Um, for the smaller kids. The picnic tables and shades was something that we had previously had in the bid and the budget that we ended up taking out. And I'm kind of glad we did, because I think we got to see the space come alive. We're going to be doing two shades. With the picnic tables, because there's a really nice tree that's over one of the seating areas, so we were able to lower that a little bit. The community park play equipment was budgeted in last year's budget. We took it out due to the pandemic. I have increased it pretty significantly, because I want to be able to add in one section some soft servicing to make it more accessible. And then in another area will be the mulch fiber. The Angel Fence Repair, that is the outfield fencing that we want to replace. It's desperately in need. That is, we we have our baseball groups that play there. It won't be the entire fencing at Angel. It will just be the outfield and up some of the the line. We'll work with the school district on that. We've actually already talked to them preliminarily on that. Ball field and surface material is something that we have every year. Community Center Parking Lot patching is something we have every year, even though we desperately still need. Probably to do something more significant at some point, but it doesn't make sense at this point. Oxford Towers Tennis Court Repair is something that is needed. I would love to just be able to patch it, but the cracks are so significant that that's just not possible, and it doesn't really make sense. I think it needs a complete repair. And one of the things that we do want to do is do lines for pickleball, because it's something that we hear about, and that this would allow us that ability. It is a significant cost to do a complete overhaul of the tennis courts. But again, the cracks are so deep that just doing the patching that we did. About a year and a half, two years ago at the community center lots wouldn't work for that. Oxford Merchant's Pavilion. So this is something that also was always in the plan. We actually. Oddly enough, I've had a lot of people calling to reserve the pavilion, and I keep telling them it's not built yet. One of the things that I have mentioned is that both the pavilion and the parking, I want to, I want to let the park as it is right now breathe a little bit, see how it flows, see how people come. See how it affects the neighborhood before we add in a pavilion that will be rented all the time. And and I know that, and I think that it's important to. Really get the flow and understanding of that. So that's why I think, that's why that's in for next year, because we'll know a lot more how it's functioning. Same thing with the parking. I I think we'll we'll have a better picture. So that's why you see those in twenty-two, twenty-three. J C Park New Play Equipment and Surface. This is where, again, I really want to apply for significant grant funding to help with some of this, but. I think J C Park is our next park that we really need to do some updates on. I really want to make it a fully accessible and inclusive park and and adding restrooms there and fixing that pavilion. I think we'll make it a great destination park. I think it's really necessary. It, like I said, the pavilion is rented all the time, and people are renting it. With a porta potty there, and they know that it's a porta potty. And so that's something that we need to increase. And then you also see the Oxford Merchant's Parking Lot construction. And then lastly, the equipment, the, right now, we're in a pretty good place with our maintenance equipment. I had many conversations with Joe to 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 verify that. Because of the last couple of years and and getting the items that we have gone to council on, we're in a pretty good place with that. But there is a budgeted, and this is a replacement for the Ford Explorer that we currently have. And that concludes one fifty-five. I'm sure there are questions. I'm happy to answer.
Natalie?
Yes, thank you. Director Mark Carlton, um, one question and then comment. When you were talking about how popular the pavilion is at J C, and you mentioned that. Some groups were businesses that might be using J C Park. Is there a different rate for a business that rents it out to make money for their business versus? A resident who's using it maybe for a birthday party or graduation party?
So I appreciate that question. So what I meant by businesses, we haven't had any businesses asked to rent pavilion. They may be using it. I have some businesses are running like their gym classes out there. It it's something that in the past years ago, we sort of. Would gently say it it's not the best use of a public space to run a business and to make money. Obviously, we couldn't control it completely, because if you don't know that they're there. Last year, we made an adjustment, knowing that a lot of businesses, particularly local businesses, could not run, whether it was their yoga class or their, you know, fit or bootcamp or something. We, because they, a number of them did call us, and we said, you know, if you can find open park space. You know, you can have that. I think we'll probably continue to have that sort of gentle. Behavior this year, again, knowing that we're still in the midst of this pandemic and that it's safer to be outside. But as far as the pavilion, at this point, we don't have a different business rate. In my mind, we. Should, we have a different resident and non-resident rate, so I think that we could possibly do like a non-resident rate for a business unless possibly it's a Berkeley business. But that hasn't been where the, where I meant the park is being used by businesses.
Okay, it like to continue the conversation, especially as we get a pavilion at. What's now called Oxford Merchant's Park. I agree. I think the demand for it is going to be really high, and. I'd like to make sure that it's very reasonable for our residents, of course, but also think about how if if. Businesses or non-residents want to run it, I think it is important that we have a different rates for them. So thank you for that.
I totally agree. And yeah, we can continue that conversation. I totally agree.
And then my final, my comment is just to thank you for all of the focus that you are putting into making our parks inclusive and accessible. We talk about this not only for kids who need inclusive play. Equipment and how important that is, but the other kids who don't need it, but they they get more friends when everyone's included, and the grandparents being able to bring their grandkids. And I just think that it sets a really good message to our residents that. Our public spaces are there for everyone, and I'm really grateful for the grants for your applications. For those grants and for our city's willingness to spend more money on that, making that a priority. So thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, that concludes six one four. We are going to. No, well, there's one page, but it's it's all finance. It's vision dental healthcare. Okay, so that concludes. Six one four. So we'll move on to page one fifty-eight or one fifty-seven. Six one five. This is the page of revenues. Mostly here, you'll see the grant funding from Smart that we receive. You know, again, Smart continues to be a great partner for us. Our transportation has been running five days a week for the last several months. We were running four days a week before that and three days a week before that, and for a few months we were down, but I'm incredibly grateful to our drivers. For driving throughout this pandemic. There, they are both also getting a slight increase in pay that I think is is absolutely more than warranted. Both of them are incredibly dedicated. There are times where I have asked them to to take some time, and if said, no, the the seniors need me. Literally, that is always their response, and. They themselves are seniors who have really gone above and beyond throughout this last year, and I'm incredibly grateful to to both James and Tim. For what they've done for our seniors. So you'll see those revenues here. You'll see small revenues for senior programs. Again, you'll see those expenses downs as we are not running. The one senior program that we've been able to do is Cheer Yoga. We are offering it for free virtually for our seniors. We are paying an instructor to offer it, but but letting our seniors take it again to have some sort of connection and interaction. And and we think that's important. And then Independence for Life, that again is some grant funding, but also fair revenue from the bus. The the bus is a donation. We don't, if you can't pay, you can still ride it, but most of our seniors do pay to ride it. And so that is page one fifty-eight. I'm not seeing any questions. I'll move on. The rest is pretty straightforward. Again, you'll see a portion of our senior coordinator, who also does our events, Dan McMen here, a portion of his budget is is here. As well as our two drivers, James, you'll see some of his hours here, and then the rest of his hours along with Tim are in one one three seven oh seven. We have had a lot of work that we've had to do on our big bus just recently. So we are, we did recently. Smart allows for funding at a certain point with all of their vehicles. So about two weeks ago, we submitted to hopefully get another vehicle from Smart to replace that bus. If you recall, we recently, we replaced our van a few years ago for the same funding and grant application. Last year, in twenty twenty, we did receive our new diesel after hearing that we received it in two thousand sixteen, so it's not exactly the quickest. Process, but we did get it. It was the same for all communities, and we we weren't singled out there, and. So we now have two, two newer, great vehicles that we drive most of the time, and the bigger bus that. We are trying to replace, which I know would make our mechanic very happy. Sean is also smiling about that one, because he knows. So you'll see those vehicle contractual, those expenses in one fifty-nine, one fifty-nine. On one sixty, you will see our two drivers and their hours here. And the difference in pay is. One has the C D L and can drive the larger vehicle, and then one has the chauffeur. So if if, sorry, I was blanking on C D L. That you'll see that there, vehicle maintenance, those costs. And that concludes six one five and Parks and Recreation. Any questions?
Well, Teresa, as you mentioned at the very beginning. Your department. Hit arguably harder than any other department with the lack of being able to. To run programs and generate revenue, because as you mentioned, you you generate revenue so that you can do things and you can continue to provide services. Also, your department was probably the most important in terms of allowing people to get outside during COVID, when there was no nowhere else to really go. Outside was one of the safer places. So. The work that that you and your your staff have done to maintain the parks, but also to continue to look at other ways to utilize parks. Being incredibly creative with the programs that you were able to run outside, things that normally may have been done inside. I'll tell you that it had an absolutely tremendous impact on our community and sustaining. Mental health and frustration and COVID fatigue and everything else that that folks were seeing over the past year. Having an outlet somewhere to to go outside, even if it's just for twenty to thirty minutes to to be able to do an event. Was incredibly important. And your budget also has a ton of question marks, because we don't know what the rest of the year is is going to look like. As you mentioned, we're hopeful. That we'll be able to do a number of programs and maybe have some events. They may look a little bit differently this year. But at least being able to resume some sort of normalcy just has a tremendous impact. On the attitudes and and the mentality of all the folks in our community, and certainly the seniors as well, being able to continue to provide. Some level of service. So to folks who may not, it may not just be as easy to get out and about as like as they'd like to be. I just want to thank you and your department for going. Above and beyond, and and all of our departments did, but you had to probably be a little bit more creative. Aside from the library and being able to continue to provide those services. So. I certainly appreciate that. Council, I know, appreciates that. Staff appreciates that. And the residents appreciate that as well. Before we we close Parks and Rec, any additional questions or comments that that were not asked as Teresa was was going through the presentation? Bridget?
I just wanted to comment as the liaison to the Parks and Recreation Department. How proud I am of you, Teresa, and your leadership. During this time, always, but especially during this time, you truly. Have the health and wellness of our community at the forefront of your mind, and you led with that in mind. You continued to find creative ways to get people moving. As you mentioned earlier, you took that, took the inside out. So a lot of the things that were happening inside, you got creative to allow them to happen outside. And you created new ways to recreate and and new things to do outside while still engaging our community. And keeping that sense of connection. And so I'm very grateful to have you. And your team at the helm of the department. I also want to mention to thank you again, you and your entire staff for doing the wellness checks. That was really an important part of what recreation did for our community along along with the library. I'm not going to short shrift the library, but we're talking about recreation here. It was, it was very important, and I am grateful for that. And and. On a another high note, as a new grandma, I am very excited to be able to take my grandson to the park. Along with the other. Old ladies and and new moms, of course, and be able to utilize our our parks and. The accessibility that you touched upon and and that is also at the forefront of your mind is is very important. So thank you again for all that you do.
Thank you.
All right, that will bring an end to Parks and Recreation. And that will lead us to the main event today. We have Derek and Sean with us ready to go. I apologize, Council, we're a little bit off on my. My timing at this point, so we will plan to take a break after Parks and Rec or Part of Public Works, I should say. We'll take a five-minute break after we allow Derek and Sean, the commiserate time, to help walk us through. All of the different budgets and and different aspects that make up public works. Welcome, Derek and Sean. Where would you like us to start? What page?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Thank you, Sean, for joining us. Looks like we'll be starting on PDF page forty-seven, according to. My notes, so if everybody could go to forty-seven. We'll start in general fund. I don't think there's any big changes here. I I will note. It looks like some of our overtime was shifted out of one oh one. In this account, I think transferred to two oh two. So we may touch on that a little bit later. That's why you see some zeros in a couple of those columns relative to overtime. Fuel and oil moving down the list. Again, I I use three-year averages for unleaded and diesel fuel. And program those in, obviously, fuel prices. Fluctuate, and the numbers that you see here, you know, are made months ago, but I I put my best shot at it. And that's something, well, I guess we'll just have to continue to monitor as we see pricing fluctuations there. Moving on to forty-eight. Again, I don't see too many major changes here. Compared to. Previous years. One big item that's relatively new is we do have in the contractual services budget. Application and a D T tree planting grant, which is a one-to-one grant, so we're looking to request. Ten thousand dollars for that grant to offset some tree planting expenses. It looks like that grant is due within the next month, so we will need to be jumping on that rather quickly. The Tree Board is assisting with that as well, just so everyone is in the loop on that. Any questions on forty-seven or forty-eight?
Yes, I have a question, Mary. Are uniforms, you you're showing eleven dollars per employee per year for uniforms, which is substantial increase from last year. Can you explain why you went from five fifty to eleven hundred per employee per year?
You know, Jack, I think it was in general just a. An opportunity to just improve the the look of of the staff and and to get some more uniforms for them. I I think it was just an appearance issue more than anything. Sean, you probably can allude on that a little bit, too.
Yeah, actually, last year, in the same process, I think we doubled. We doubled the amount for uniforms. It may not be. May not be reflected on here, but it.
It didn't show it. I went back to last year's budget. It didn't, it showed the other figure, three seven, three twenty-five and and two twenty-five.
Where we we. Double it, so I'm not sure what.
Okay, main question, I'll make sure it was correct, that you realized that, and there was a rationale behind it, so.
It was, and I, Jack, it was discussed. My memory is it was discussed last year, and we did, we did agree to increase it at that time. So I I know the. The number is correct in the current budget as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on forty-seven or forty-eight? All right, moving to forty-nine. We've got our DOT physicals and medical tests, nothing new there. This is where we also have our underground insurance for our storage tank, our field storage tank, so you'll see that reflected. under nine fourteen zero zero one. Uh, that is an expense that continues to rise quite significantly year over year. Um, I know we've got the fuel tank in the CIP, so that's something we're continuing to monitor. Telephones, utilities. Again, I use three year averages for electric and gas uh, on utilities. Building maintenance, that covers a lot of the sort of regular annual charges that we have, including security alarms, fire alarm systems, HVAC, uh, overhead doors, uh, lots of miscellaneous building maintenance items there. Moving down the list, we are looking to, hopefully there'll be a road scholar program uh, which is a three year commitment and we're hoping to send a couple of staff to that. I, I'm last time I checked, they weren't sure they were going to run the program. Uh, but we're hoping to send a couple of folks to that three year commitment uh, training class. So we've budgeted for that. Any questions on forty nine or fifty? Moving on to fifty one. We've got a couple um, under building improvements. You see a couple of projects noted there. Including a base station relocation. We'll get more into the, the office piece of that, but there's just some miscellaneous items listed there. Equipment, we've got a couple of items noted in the equipment um, under one oh one. So these would be generally, you know, road related type items out of the water and sewer account, you know, not related to water and sewer. And then under vehicles. We've also got some uh, some new vehicles, hook trucks noted uh, in those accounts as well. Any questions on fifty or fifty one? Okay, let's move to fifty two. This is the garage account. So this is mechanics, um, full time employees. The um, hiring of the additional mechanic is in the current budget. As everybody knows, so that's, that's still in my court to proceed. I just haven't uh, had a chance to spend as much time with that as I had hoped, but we still are hoping to bring on an additional uh, mechanic in, in that account. And you can see as you move down, we've also got the uniforms in there. And, and again, you see, Jack, that, that uniform account, the eleven hundred again, presumably times two, since we'll have two employees there. Um, vehicle maintenance, we've got an outside repair account noted. A little bit of uh, a little bit for the uh, mechanics license as well. Questions on the garage? All right, let's move to four, four, six, which is street lighting. You can see under street lighting, we've got, tried to itemize all the locations that we pay for. Again, just a reminder to everybody, the, the vast majority of the lights in Berkeley are DTE owned and maintained. And the vast majority are unmetered. Um, so this is where we pay for those monthly expenses to DTE. We had the LED conversion project, a couple of phases um, a few years ago. Any questions on street lighting?
I think I asked this a couple of years ago, but I'll ask again, um, with the, especially with the DTE owned lights, is there anything we can convince them into switching to LEDs to lower our costs on, you know, this pretty, this necessary but substantially large electrical?
So the, the last time we visited this, Dennis, I, I do remember that, you know, the DTE folks did tell us that the vast majority of the low hanging fruit was addressed with the initial LED changeout. And, and at that time, Dennis, the, the advantages of, of moving forward with additional LEDs, uh, there, there wasn't a, a very attractive payback at that point. Now, that doesn't mean it isn't different now and that's something we need to stay on top of. I was notified today actually that our community lighting contact at DTE is no longer with that group. Um, so we will have somebody new involved and so maybe we can uh, touch base on that topic again. It probably wouldn't hurt just to check back in. At that time, they were pretty aggressive in approaching us. It was a, a pretty attractive solution and we move forward with it and, and I think we'll revisit it with whoever our new contact is.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on streetlights? If not, let's jump to major roads, page seventy five PDF version. So this is, uh, we'll start with the revenues. We use the equations that the state of Michigan gives us to uh, plug numbers in for these. Um, I was certainly expecting a much more significant decrease here. Um, but at this point, I guess we're not seeing it. So that's some good news. Um, and then we've got summer winter maintenance. As everybody knows, we get a little bit of money from RCOC relative to twelve mile. And we also uh, recognize some revenue from Huntington Woods and the school district relative to salt. Remember, trees are no longer paid for by residents. So that's the, that's the zeros in that line item. So any questions on major road revenues?
On uh, tree purchases, this is a question that I get semi regularly and I want to double check that I'm saying it right. That people can purchase a tree at cost for their private property. Um, as part of the program, it's just not something we advertise.
Sean, can you chime in on that one?
Currently, we have not been allowing them to purchase them at us. Um, there were some delivery, delivery days were always interesting. They'd want it in the backyard and there's a car in the driveway and we're kind of stuck in the middle. Um, and it's planning, there was some, some setbacks there as well. If they wanted to plan it, they could pay the contractor direct. So we just went to a, a free tree. And private trees, we'll give them the nursery phone number and you can work directly with the nursery for a private tree.
Okay, and I'm completely comfortable with that without giving us administrative headaches. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
No problem.
Any other questions on revenues? All right, let's move to two oh two, the, the main street fund. This will be page seventy seven of the PDF. So here, um, and again, you'll see that that overtime budget changing. Again, it looks like the um, some of the general fund money was moved over to major streets here. Uh, again, we've got our uniform account. I don't see really any changes there. Moving down to page seventy eight, contractual services. Quite a few of the same activities listed there. Although I will say, I think we're going to be going out to bid again for uh, spray paint and joint sealing work and um, I'm hoping to do, do some mastic repairs is what it's called. Um, I'm sure some of you has, have noticed on Woodward uh, that four to five inch strip of black uh, longitudinally down the road and, and it's uh, that's probably getting into a lot of specifics, but it's uh, it's been a, uh, we've been real happy with how that's performing and I'd like to try that on a few of our streets and some of our cold joints. Um, it's just a, it's just a cleaner alternative to spray patch. Now, we're looking at other options other than spray patch too. I know we're doing that every year. Um, and it, it does a fair job. We've been happy with it, but we've got to stay on top of the, the latest and greatest as well. And I think some of this mastic work uh, might be some of the future. Um, engineering. Um, miscellaneous engineering projects are, are listed here, including um, FAC applications, PESA road rankings, some of the usual things. I do want to point out the federal aid committee. If everybody remembers, that's how we got money for Coolidge uh, north of twelve mile. Um, I think it would be good for us to start making some applications for federal aid again. Um, for some of our major streets. Um, what I'm finding is, is that when federal money is working its way down, they tend to pick from projects that are already submitted via the federal aid committee. Um, so I think this is something that we're going to want to stay on top of. It doesn't mean that whatever we apply for is gonna, gonna hit the mark initially. Coolidge didn't hit the mark initially, north of twelve. But in a couple of years, we got the funds. And so I think it's important for us to start looking at that angle for some of our major streets.
Derek, sorry, just, does the federal aid uh, committee, do they take like rolling applications or is uh, just a single time of the year? Or how does that work?
Sure, it's a single time of the year, Ross. So it's, it's a, a, around the first of the year. So um, we've already run some preliminary numbers for Catalpa, working with HRC last year. Uh, we didn't end up formally applying. Um, but I think we're going to start moving that direction to try to get that project in the queue. And again, I, I'm certainly not going to sit here and say, well, we'll get funding uh, quickly on that, but it's, it looks like as more federal money starts rolling in, that's where they're plucking from is that list. And it seems like you got a bit of a leg up if you can already be on the list. So.
Yeah, that makes sense. It would seem to make sense to try to get something ready for the first of the year. As you indicated, since infrastructure seems to be a hot topic and something seems to be getting done, or hopefully.
All right, I'm on page seventy eight of the PDF, just working my way down. Um, we've got that Coolidge sidewalk project, twelve mile to Webster. Um, twenty two, twenty three noted there. Again, we're thinking on the east side uh, of Coolidge. Um, you know, that's just basically the walk costs. I know there's some other ideas floating around as well, but um, so we've kind of targeted that for twenty two, twenty three.
Derek, you got a question on that one?
Go ahead.
I noticed that the uh, the engineering cost is fifty thousand for a sidewalk is two hundred and fifty thousand, which is twenty percent cost. Normal rule of thumb for engineering projects, uh, which we never seem to get through is eight to ten percent uh, for federal projects. Uh, so we're going to have you, if we're applying for federal money, we're going to have to start trying to get closer to what the federal guidelines are for engineering costs versus program costs.
Now, I will say, Jack, um, eight to ten is common for the design phase. But we also have to remember there's the CE phase. So uh, if we do both of those, we are much closer to the, the twenty percent number when you include both.
As, as long as we're making sure we're documenting that way so that we can prove it in the, you know, in the graphical as well. And also, we don't need that anymore. We're going to have a facility manager. So we don't need that anymore.
Thanks, Jack.
Yeah, I wanted to just mention on this project um, that uh, when we start getting into the planning, if we could reach out to Roseland and, and see if there's any, you know, if they can work with us, if we can work together to, you know, pretty out that whole interface by the cemetery there.
All right, any other questions? We'll move to page seventy nine. Street sweeping, uh, not much to really add here. Um, not any big changes. Uh, eighty street trees. Here you can see um, both of our costs for planting of trees as well as forestry services. So I try to detail those hours and costs so that you can get a sense of, of how that money is being spent. At least the uh, major road piece of that. And again, we try to, we split this seventy thirty between local and major streets is generally how we work that. Questions on, on forestry? There's got to be some questions on forestry. No?
I think as it relates to the forestry there, there've been a lot of conversations uh, amongst uh, you know, council, certainly with you. Um, some things to look at maybe in the future. I wouldn't necessarily say they're all specific to this year's budget of what you have in here, but I do think there will be some, especially as it gets to the local streets. Um, some, some more conversation on forestry.
Okay, fair enough. All right, page eighty two. Catch basins. Not much to add there. Eighty three, grass and weeds. Questions, comments? Page eighty five, PDF version. Street signs. This one ebbs and flows depending on, on what we're working on.
Oh, does this link in with the study that HRC did for public safety and uh, changing the signs that were needed? Do we, is this an additional amount of money above that or?
You know, I, Jack, we've been, we've been compensating for that in these, these two accounts, well, two oh two, two oh three. So you will see under contractual services, again on page eighty five, the PDF. You will see that we designated some funds there for public safety sign removals and placement per that HRC study. And this is assuming, Jack, that, that we're unable to, you know, meet those recommendations with our in-house staff. So this would be outside contracting. I think that's how we have to approach it. I don't know the extent of, you know, what that study is going to show, but this is a bit of a placeholder for that work.
Okay, thank you.
Eighty six, you can see we're paying uh, for our traffic signal maintenance. You know, we paid RCOC for uh, all of our traffic signal maintenance. So uh, that's where uh, those funds come from. Any questions on signs or signals? Eighty five and eighty six. All right, let's jump to page eighty seven of the PDF version. Winter maintenance. Here's where we have the, the bulk of our rock salt costs. I'm dialing back our tonnage a little bit um, from fourteen hundred to twelve hundred. I just feel like it's a little bit of a tighter number based on our previous years. Uh, the fifty six dollars a ton, I think is a good number on that. So uh, these numbers should be fairly accurate in the end. Again, just so everybody knows, we're able to buy thirty percent more than twelve hundred at the same price. So we've got some flexibility. We're also able to buy, we've got to at least buy seventy percent of it. But we've got a, a nice window there to buy salt, um, depending on how bad the winter is. Questions on on rock salt? Or winter maintenance? All right, everyone, I think we can jump over to local streets. Which would be PDF. Page ninety one. So many of these accounts will mirror, obviously, major So many of these accounts will mirror, obviously, major streets. Um, again, you can see the Act fifty-one. calculation for local streets. That's coming off of the state spreadsheet. And again, we're, we're pulling the trees off the revenue side, so. And we do do a transfer in from major streets. I think everyone's aware of that. A hundred and eighty thousand comes into local. Question on local streets revenues?
Um, a question on, under fines and forfeitures, um, bond forfeitures and this. There's bond forfeitures several places, but um, you know, the question is, are we, are we or can we start tracking costs of, you know, when the, the bonds are forfeit? Because we have to do some work that somebody didn't, you know, are we actually, are the bonds large enough that we are covering our actual expenses?
Yeah, and I'm gonna need some help on this one because I do not, I do not plug these figures in. So I don't know if, if Mark or Lori could, could chime in on this one?
Yeah, um, okay, so the money that comes in from bond forfeits. Is often. It comes in and then it gets applied against work. So they have bonds and we close out their bond money and we bring it in and we apply it. Against something, some work that's been done in there, right, Derek? You know what I'm talking about? Like.
Yeah, I'm assuming this, Lori, is for street repairs and, and those kinds of things where, where they post some money with the building department.
Exactly.
Sometimes we end up doing the work and sometimes not, and this is where somehow it balances out, I guess.
So instead of, it's, it falls under bond forfeits, but instead of getting a refund on their bonds. That money applies to work that we've done for the contractor. It's something like you following?
Okay, right. My, my underlying question is if, if we aren't already, if we can start tracking what our actual costs are. To see if we need to increase our bond rate to cover, you know, if we are, if we're working at a loss, you know, if it costs us. More to do the work than the amount of the bond, you know, we're eventual, we're giving them free labor essentially. And it may even be to their financial benefit to just, okay, I'll forfeit the bond, but you do it. So I just want to make sure our, our bond rate for, uh, this is, um, set.
Covering.
Where it should be covering what our actual costs are.
And I know Sean, you can chime in here, but I know, Sean, you've been working just of late with, with community development on that very issue as far as making sure that. When it comes to bonds and fees, revisiting that topic with community development to make sure we've got accounts set up and we're covering our costs, correct?
Correct. Every, anytime we, we get involved, when a contractor doesn't do what they're supposed to. We break it down, how many guys, how many hours, what's the rate, this is the fringe benefit, all the costs. If it goes above their bond amount. It goes to finance and they actually invoice them for the remaining amount.
Okay, excellent.
So we're looking at increasing the bottom out to try and cover and reduce those invoices, because it's a lot of work. To generate those invoices. It's unneeded work to, to generate those invoices. We'd like to limit that.
I need to say some of the cost should be this administrative time because it's. Cost where you're not able to do other productive work for the city. You're doing their work for them.
Yeah, there's, there's a twenty percent added to everything we do, um, record sports, so.
Okay.
Pretty comfortable. Question on those, on the invoices that you were talking about, Sean. Uh, what's, and if you don't have this number off top, uh, you or Lori or, or, um, or Mark, just, you know, we can get it later, but. Uh, what's uh, what's the default rate on that? Do they, how mu- how much goes uncollected out of those invoices?
That, that would probably be a, a finance. I, I'm not sure what the rate is on those.
Yeah, and that's okay. If, I, I know it's kind of an obscure question, so I, you know, sending it later is totally fine for Mark or Lori or whoever works best.
Yeah, I can check with Sue to see how many of those. Usually, Lori, if, if something's unpaid. Uh, it's tougher with contractors because they may not necessarily have a tax bill in Berkeley, but. You know, sometimes if it's our, you know, if it, it's a residence, easy enough to add it to taxes as a special assessment, but. A lot of times contractors, we don't have any recourse to, to throw a special assessment on a bill, but uh. Um, we can check. I, I don't, I, I don't recall Lori has to write very many of those off.
No, no, there's not too many, and I usually will work with, um, Kim. Because if it's a contractor that we're still using on a regular basis and they owe us money, she can do something. I'm not sure because I'm not in building, but to say, basically, until you pay this, we will not issue you any more permits or things like that. Okay, so there's something that can be done. So I will work with her when there's some outstanding, um, invoices. If she can do anything. If it's a contractor that we're not using anymore, I mean, we try to collect, we send them another invoice. Kind of thing, but.
Great, thanks.
This sounds like this is well covered, so I'm really satisfied with these answers. Thank you.
Well, well covered and well coordinated among various three departments so far, uh, in the city to make sure that we are. Not only being, recovering the cost for our time, but also making sure that we're staying after. Uh, folks who may have defaulted or haven't paid to make sure that we, we continue to chase them down. Thank you all for your answers.
All right, I think I've got us on PDF ninety-three, ninety-four. Street maintenance operations. Again, nothing. Too significant here. Again, we've got the contractual services, pieces of some of the. Regular core maintenance items that we do. So, uh, any questions on ninety-four, ninety-five? Ninety-six. Street sweeping. Again, pretty cut and dry. Ninety-seven is the, the local side of street trees. So again, this is where, um. The bulk of our tree work is represented. Again, obviously, we've got. More miles of local than major, so, uh, this is where we've got the tree purchases as well as, uh, the tree work, so.
Mention in passing, I know there's, um. I'm not expecting us to have any discussion on this, but just mention in passing, there is some concern that, you know, the same people proposing what trees to. Come down are the same people that then take them down. Um, but I just wanted to address that with, we hear that concern and we're looking at how to address it. Um, but it's, it's not something we can answer and go into tonight. So, but I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you, Dennis. Any other questions on? On trees? Planting of or maintenance of? And again, I'm, I'm happy to report and, and Sean would probably know that the numbers better than I would, but, um. We're in a much better place now with our trees, you know, than we were in the late Wanzo days when it was pretty rough around here. Um. We wouldn't see Wanzo for, for days and, um, we've made major strides, uh, relative to our urban canopy. Um, I know many of the discussions are not always easy, but, um, I do feel very good about where we're at with trees and we're in much better shape than we've ever been, I think, so. Kudos to all involved in that. It's not a small endeavor. Uh, you've, you've gotta, you've gotta put forth the, the budget to make things happen, and I think we've done that over the, over the last few years, so, thank you.
I think the most important thing, Derek, you, you mentioned is, is protecting and preserving our urban canopy. That is incredibly important. Um, to all of us, you know, sometimes we'll, we'll get questions, you know, from residents and we'll certainly make sure that you're always looped in and you always. Provide great answers and, and heart is always, um, willing to answer as well, just on, you know, what, which trees, you know, are, are being maybe. Removed or, or trimmed and what is the reasoning and making sure that we're certainly not removing otherwise healthy trees. There are certain. Reasons, uh, why the arborist has, has made the recommendations that they've made. And then going back to what Councilmember Henan mentioned as, uh, just a few moments ago. Just making sure that we have obviously the right information so that when we are passing this information on to our residents or getting it directly from you. There is a certainly a method here, man. This, as you mentioned, you know, in, in the, the tail end of the Wanzo days, things were. We'll just say we had some, some catch-up work to do, and we were pretty aggressive over the last few years. Um, in making those strides to get us to a point where we do have a healthy canopy and, and a healthy canopy that. We can be comfortable is going to be around, uh, for the future because that's our tree-lined streets are, are one of the hallmarks of our community. And just making sure that we're continuing that conversation with residents, and we've always been able to get the, the answers from you or from her. But, but i- it's incredibly important to us. So when I mentioned before that, you know, the forestry was, was something that we probably talked about a little more in local streets. It's not only here for, from a budget perspective, it's just also in, what is our vision and strategy for the future to continue? And you, you touched on that, and you mentioned how important it is and. That we're in a much better place now than we were years ago. And I think that's the most important. Point to, to make sure that we hammer home here and continue to focus out for the future.
Any other questions on trees? All right, let's move to PDF page ninety-nine. Catch basins. Catch basins, grass and weeds. Um, again, I don't think there's much to. Really talk about there. Uh, street signs, page one oh one. Again, this is where we've, uh, where we pay for signs. Uh, you won't see signal work here because those signals are. Um, the vast majority of those are on our major streets, so there's a little bit of money here for that, but the vast majority of it comes out of major streets. Um, just to give everyone a quick update, I know the street name signs have been. On our mind and, and working on for a few years. We, we handled that in-house, so it was, as time allowed, we took care of those signs and I'm. I'm happy to port, we're, we're really, really close to the finish line. I think, Sean, all we really have left, um, twelve mile and Woodward were, I think, some of our. The last ones to hit and, um, and that will be it, and all the new signs will be out and, and I'm certainly happy how they're performing. So. Do I have that right, Sean, with what's left?
Yep, twelve mile and Woodward is pretty much all that's left. Everything else is, we've covered.
And, uh. And I know the old signs went fast out of the museum from what I heard, so.
We're certainly very talkative. Natalie, I see you.
Just a quick comment. At our last beautification advisory committee meeting, the members expressed how grateful they were for the new street signs. So I just thought I'd pass that along from that group of very invested. Beautifiers in Berkeley.
Thank you for sharing, Natalie. It took some time, but we got her done. All right, winter maintenance, page one oh three, PDF. And so this is, um. You know, a much smaller number as it relates to salting, but some of the same figures that you saw back on major streets. Any further questions on? Local streets. I think that pretty much wraps up both major and local streets. Any other questions or comments? All right, let's move to solid waste, two two six. Looks like I'm on page one oh six of the PDF. Um, we'll start with the revenues. So you can see here, this is, um. We're recognizing those payments, uh, for, uh, for trash, both residential and commercial. Special trash, that's basically city, um. City building pickups as well. Any questions on page one oh six?
I'll just, um, I'll mention something that, uh, some other council members brought up last night of. Perhaps adding recycling to the, uh, trash receptacles on Coolidge and Twelve Mile in the downtown district as we do it. And I don't know if that would. Go under the special trash, but that's just part of the conversation that might come out that if we add recycling, then it might increase some costs here. So just stay. Be aware.
True. All right, let's move to one oh seven. PDF version. So we'll get on the expense side. Overtime, again, that's primarily fall leaf collection, which can vary. Quite a bit. It just really depends on how the leaves are falling. Um, some years it, it's nice and spread out. Other years, it seems to fall all at once and we're scrambling, but, um. Uh, we'll just roll with it, um, on that one. Uh, uniforms, not much to offer there. As we move to one oh eight, you can see our costs relative to. Uh, rubbish collection and trash disposal. As I've mentioned to the group before, the bulk of our costs come from picking it up, not necessarily. You know, dumping it or at the landfill. The, the bulk of our costs, the majority of our costs are for Tringali, the, the equipment and the folks picking it up. Um, obviously, we pay that through Sakura. And they have a, a two and a half, in, two and a half percent increase, so you can see that reflected in, uh, in these figures. You will also note the, the brush disposal, obviously, that line item has come down significantly, um, over the years as our department has handled that work. We continue to make little modifications to brush collection, um, and I think we will continue to do that. Um, but I think it's working pretty well. Um. We really haven't even had to. I don't think we've had to, Sean, rely on heart even to help us much of late. I think we're able to tackle it with our own forces, uh, predominantly, correct?
Correct, yeah, we don't.
Any other questions on? One oh eight?
And Derek, honor, uh, roll out loader bucket. Would you explain what that is?
So this is, um. This is for our front-end loader. Sean, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is for our front-end loader for the leaf pile. So. This is basically an extension that we put on the front-end loader, Jack, to be able to pile and load leaves. Without having to, uh, make a ramp essentially, Jack, to be able to stack those leaves. Did I get that right, Sean?
Yes, it's a, it's a bucket that hinges at the front edge versus the rear edge. So you get that whole depth of the bucket in for a height increase. Uh, so if your bucket's three foot high or three foot deep, you get an extra three feet on the hinge to get over the side of the truck.
I just wanted you to explain this to make sure people understood, so thank you.
I will note, it's probably an appropriate time that, um. It's unclear still whether or not we're gonna be able to take leaves to Madison Heights as we, as we've done in most years. If, if everybody recalls, last year. We, uh, transferred leaves to the old Ice Arena parking lot where they were staged and moved out. My guess is that, that Madison Heights will probably be unusable again next year. So we will either need to use the Ice Arena, the DPW site or, or some other, uh, location to be able to. Drop leaves and then load them into larger semis for, uh, exit, this exit out of the city. So it's something we'll, we're gonna keep tabs on, but, uh, I'm, I'm sensing more and more from Sakura that, that Madison Heights. May not be a reliable source for us here in the short term relative to leaf disposal, so.
Why was, um, Madison Heights not available?
It's a, it's a, it's a long story, Dennis, but in, in essence, Madison Heights and Sakura have been fighting for many years over that site. And Madison Heights, uh, basically called them out on some things that essentially prevented us from using it in that fashion. So. It's still our site. I think they're still pursuing it. Um, but they ran into some, some trouble with Madison Heights and they're just trying to, trying to resolve those issues. And I'm hopeful they will, but I think in the short term, it may be a struggle for us.
Okay, thank you.
The one advantage of the change, um, is that, you know, we are able to get more off the street faster. Um, so that, that is an advantage that we have with storing them more locally is we're able to, you know, from a resident perspective. Um, so that, that is an advantage that we have with storing them more locally is we're able to, you know, from a resident perspective, I think you're able to see. You know, you're able to see more efficiency because we don't have to drive all the way to. Uh, Madison Heights to drop them off before that truck comes back. We're able to keep working because the drop off location is closer. So. That has been a great advantage for us though. So there's always some trade offs and some things you learn. All right, I think that. Is it for two two six? Any other questions? Solid waste, recycling? Yard waste, bags, curbside pickup, anything else there? All right, I think we can jump to PDF page one eighteen. So this would be the road millage. Section. So just to reiterate. Years one and two of that road millage we're, we're using on this uh comprehensive uh concrete patching citywide. So we're, we're in a lot of different areas. Year one was last year, year two is this year. So uh that contractor will be. Um, back in our town, probably in about a month or so to finish off the remaining sections that we have under that. Um, our goal is to use and utilize all the money that we have. So um. I've already started to develop some extra locations. Uh, again, we'll see how things go, but we're hoping to. You know, get as much new concrete as, as possible uh via that. And then next year, the plan is to, you know, do the next Harvard. I should have some uh data for everyone in the near future relative to where we're going to go next. Uh, I know that's a hot topic for some, um, and we're trying to. Look at water main, road, pazer. Lead service lines, gas main work, all of that stuff is going to kind of come into play in that, making that decision. And obviously there's no shortage of candidates. So um, but we, we need to make that decision soon because HRC needs to start designing the job. So that we can go out to bid this winter and be ready to rock and roll in the spring. So um. The next Harvard project is coming and that's where we're planning to use year three of the road millage. Um, after year three. Um, is up for discussion, you know, there's been no decisions made, at least that I'm aware of relative to that. So. Uh, that conversation will continue to ensue. I, I suspect um, there will be an interest in probably just. Running and doing another Harvard type project. Um, but needless to say, there's still, you know. Uh, other roadwork that's out there as well and, and more patching we could do. Um, so we really have a lot of options there, but I suspect we'll probably. Continue to look at reconstruction, but we just have to remember we can only do. Uh, based on the money we have, it's a half mile. So, you know. Uh, in, in Harvard's case, that was about a hundred homes that we impacted. So it's hard, you know, we certainly wish we could. Have more improvements and do more of a project, but those reconstruction brought projects are not getting any cheaper. So um, that's kind of where we're at. Questions on the road millage? Anything? So just to reiterate, we get about, uh, Mark, I think we're right around one point one million comes in per year, correct, Mark?
Uh, I think it's around one point two for the upcoming year if I'm correctly.
Right? That'll get us another ten feet. Anything else under three one, three one, three? All right, let's jump to PDF page one twenty four seventy.
I think our feedback is coming from the TV studio.
Yeah, I was just texting the stand on land.
I got it.
There we go. Okay.
Are we good?
Yes.
That's, that's much better. All right, four seventy. Sidewalks. So um. We are doing essentially two plus sections currently right now. Um. This has been a major undertaking, a lot bigger of a project than I think all of us thought. And again, we're just looking at primarily those immediates in those two sections. And then we have two sections left. Um, at the time that we produced this budget, our intent was to do two more sections next year. But I will say, given um the workload and, and what's happening this year. Um, my opinion would be that we, you know, just tackle one section next year and then the last section the following year. Obviously, this is based on the condition of the sidewalk and we're making approximations that each section is, you know, similar to others, but. Again, this is a quite extensive amount of work. Um, this year it's over six hundred. Six hundred homes impacted, so it's, it's, it's quite a bit of work. You know, the good news is we'll get, we'll get two sections done, but. Uh, we need to be able to do it and, and manage it as well. And, and uh, at least to start, uh, this has been quite an undertaking. I'm, I'm grateful that Tori has stepped up. To assist us in that because if it wasn't for Tori, I, I'm not sure what we, where we would be, but um. We've, we've reached the point where residents have notified us. So now we're dealing with a few stragglers and then um. Construction is slated to begin uh sometime in late June. Um, obviously we're, we're working on the tree work as well, so. That's kind of where we stand. Um. Obviously, council's interest is to get through the immediate citywide. So the two inches or greater are the highest priority and we'll continue to get those done. Once the immediates are done, you know, the question becomes now, where do we go next? And so uh, we're certainly open to suggestions on that as well. Thoughts on sidewalks?
Yeah, I just wanted to take a moment to discuss um among ourselves on council um. About future funding for sidewalks after this first iteration, you know, since we're known as a walkable community, I really consider the sidewalks necessary infrastructure. Yet it's the only infrastructure where we require the property owner to pay for that slice of it running their home. We don't require that for roads or water. Or for anything else. Um, what I'd like to propose is that the city takes over part or all of funding of the sidewalk repairs. And, and I think this is especially important since a lot of the repairs, actually a majority of the repairs are caused by. Uh, damage from city owned trees. So I'm not suggesting we set a specific policy tonight or that we change anything in this budget. But I'd just like to get a sense for how council feels um on the city perhaps taking this over. And then if there is some consensus that we maybe ask staff to start looking at um funding scenarios for the future. So that we can then set a policy and make decisions.
But it's definitely something that, that we've spoken about, uh Dennis. We've had some conversations. I know other council members have similar concerns as do I. I think the, the latter part of your um statement or your comments. Probably the most important right now in Salient is, is trying to look at ways to figure out how we can fund this in the future. If there's a way to not pass those costs on as far as what that looks like and that funding mechanism, I think that's where we're going to really have to do some, some research and have staff. Come up with some, some ideas and, and maybe some. More creative than, than the typical ways that we typically fund things in the community to see if it, um, to see if it makes sense. And if it's, you know, economically obviously feasible for us as well. But I do think it is a conversation that we, we will continue to have. And um, I know I speak for some other folks that I've spoken with on council as well. It's just finding out what that right mechanism is and that's where we need staff to, to help provide some ideas. Is that fair? Anybody have disagreement with, with that?
I'd just like to add a comment though, Dennis. We do charge for water with the ready to serve charge on the water bill, I think would be considered as. So.
That's fair, that we don't. Charge correctly for the pipes, so.
And we, maybe we need a ready to walk charge on there for the sidewalks.
Yeah, uh, Dan, I, I, Dennis, I agree. Uh, you know, Dan, we've had these conversations, uh, city manager and I for, you know, a while as well. And I, I, I completely agree that. We get some options here from city staff to look at alternate funding sources, um, to kind of take that burden off residents. Uh, so yeah, I'd look forward to see what, uh, what staff might be able to come up with.
Bridget?
Thank you. I, I know council member Gavin doesn't want to blow his own horn, but um. He really has been working diligently on this for months and months now, trying to look at different. Funding mechanisms, what may have been done in the past in other municipalities and. And I know that, you know, we all are, you know, we all live here, so it, it's, it's going to hit, you know, close to home uh for us as well. In terms of, you know, whether it's a homeowner paying for the sidewalk outside of their home. Or the city paying, and I mean, if, if the, the city really is us and it's our tax money, so it's still our money. But to your point, Councilmember Han, and I do see. That it, it sort of takes the sting out of it a bit, um, going that direction. Um, and, and I really do have a problem with, as has been stated, you know, having to pay for. Trees that are not mine, that I did not plant, that I cannot maintain, trim, print, whatever. Um, that have now, you know, caused my sidewalk to. You know, buckle or whatever, um, to, to have to pay for that. So it really, it is a problem on many levels. And I think all the suggestions that have been made tonight have been about it have been good ones. And, and yes, further uh research needs to be done. And I think that. I'm optimistic, we're going to come up with something. And to your point, Mayor Turek, I, it, I think it's going to be something that. Is going to be innovative and new and something that perhaps hasn't been done before. And I think that that's kind of the direction that we need to be. Exploring. So thank you.
And to your point about it being um. Paid by the resident, no matter what, uh, yeah, people often say come, you know, why doesn't the city fix my sidewalk for free? It's like, well, it's not free, you know, not that you're getting nothing from the city for free. You're paying for it one way or the other. It's just how, how it. Comes down to you. So yeah, I'm always, you know, make sure people get that distinction.
Yeah, it's always different when it comes in an individual bill. That's different than a bill that you're used to, to paying. Uh, that, that's where that. Dissonance comes in a little bit. Again, I, I don't anticipate us being able to solve this problem. That is not, that is not the goal, but we do want to. Move forward and try to find a solution. Um, something that is workable, something that is, you know, innovative, something that works for us. So that we don't have to continue to have this conversation every time we have a sidewalk program because the same conversations have been coming up for decades. And they're going to continue to come up in the future. Now, as we're getting ready to wrap something up. This is the right time to really investigate and figure out how we can fix this moving forward. All right, Derek, I'll let you hop back in here.
No problem. All right, let's move to water and sewer. So PDF page one two twenty-two. Revenue side. Again, you can see all my notes here regarding how these numbers get generated. Um, I don't think there's anything. Any big changes here. Um, other than water sales continue to generally decline um year after year. The general thought there is that um. Use is tied to appliances and as more efficient appliances come into play that we see, we see the use uh. Generally dropping uh year over year. So uh, something to keep tabs on. Any questions on one twenty-two? One twenty-three. We no longer have a billing charge. You can see late fees here um and some other sort of miscellaneous revenues listed. Any questions on one twenty-three?
Just a comment on the uh memo line for storm utility charge. The bottom line, which is the top line on my one twenty-three, uh, it should say per quarter on it. It doesn't. You multiply that, I wish you're, you're, you're sure you only got one quarter. So that the, the memo line needs to be corrected. Okay, but the total is right, so.
Okay. Yeah, I see it, Jack. It looks like we're missing a, missing a four in there, aren't we?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
A four didn't get trans, transpose there, so, yep. All right, page one twenty-four. We get it, start getting into the expenses. Overtime. Any questions on one twenty-four? Page one twenty-five. Um, this is where we pay for some of the mailing stock. We are looking into. Um, BSNA and some uh emailing option for utility bills. Um, we've had a. A training session with BSNA and we've, we've learned that there are communities that are using that email option through BSNA. So we're interested in learning more about that, hopefully talking to some, some communities that might be utilizing that for the future. That would help uh defray some of the stationary and printing costs. Uniforms, fuel and oil. Again, we split uh fuel and oil uh between five nine two and one oh one. And West Nile briquettes. I'll be coming to council shortly on that resolution. So we are. Going to be starting putting those briquettes and catch basin soon for the West Nile virus. Page one twenty-six. You know, contractual services. Is the big one here. Lead service line replacements, which were required to. We're starting this year, we've got to average five percent. Year over year uh relative to lead service line replacements. So this is where we're going to be paying for that cost. We've done a few of these um with our staff. Um, we're going to be working with Sakura. With doing more of these in the future. So more to come on lead service line replacements. Um, we've got some ideas on how we want to. Roll this out, um, looking at other community, how other communities are doing it. Um. You know, I think the mentality of a, a first come, first served where, where somebody fills out, you know, a form online and submits that is probably a good way to do it. Uh, we have residents that are interested in this and we have residents that are not. Um, so I think we, I think we can tackle them in that fashion. Uh, again, I'm making an assessment that we've got twenty percent of our, our services are led. Um, where am I getting that information? The Harvard project. Was, was one of the main players in that since we dug everything up when we did that job and. And right around twenty percent of the let, service lines were led uh for Harvard. We impacted about a hundred homes and about, about twenty of them had led. So uh, is Harvard representative of. Our streets in Berkeley, you know, I've got no reason to say yes or no, but certainly that number could fluctuate.
Derek, what is the consultant going to do that you've got up there in the consultant line assistance was required lead service line replacements?
So Jack, I'm, I'm leaving the option open that we're going to need some help with this. Um, I've had some discussions with. I've had three meetings with Hydro Corp, who as everybody knows handles our cross connections. Uh, there's some, I think some beneficial overlap there. Um, we may be able to utilize them. To help facilitate lead service line replacements. You know, I'm viewing it coordination, getting the letters, working with the contractors, those sort of things. So Jack, that's, that's what that's for is, we're probably going to need a hand. Who, who is going to help us with that at this point? It could be various consultants in the end.
And the other thing is residents have to understand that this is three hundred and forty-five thousand, which is going to go on for the next twenty years.
That's right.
It's an unfunded mandate from the state. Not that we have any heartburn with that, but uh, yeah, thank you, state.
And, and we've, we've most recently heard of another piece of that, which is called verification, which means. Now I've got a, I've got to dig up between three and four hundred of our services in the city. And the state, essentially the state. and the state, essentially the state doesn't believe what we've told them so far, so that now they want us to field verify. Uh, they're asking every community now, they're requiring every community now to dig up regardless of your size, between 300 and 400 services to verify materials. So that's the the newest thing, unfunded mandate um that we now have to do, so.
You have to go on resident property to do that because that's going to really make a lot of residents happy.
Yeah, it, we're thinking of di- of using hydro excavation, Jack, which will will limit the disruption to property because you can just suck down. Um, but yeah, there'll there'll be some, there'll be some impacts there unfortunately, so um. Anyway, uh, it's just another new thing that that it just keeps going on and on and on. So when you think lead service line, think we've got testing, we've got verification and and we've got replacement. We've got those three things uh that we need to be doing, so.
None of it's cheap.
No. Any other questions on 126? 127, um. Again, you'll see some water funds designated for that next road reconstruction project, so um that's where that's going to come into play.
Derek, I missed one on the previous page. That's the EPA required to bring the response plan due December 2021. Uh, and we're hiring somebody to do that for us?
We are.
For $11,000, that's a little expensive, but the question is, are we going to use the EPA formula? Or the state EPA template or the state template?
I think we have.
We could probably do for a buck and a half.
Yeah, I I think we're going to use the EPA one, Jack, and and actually, we may have some cost savings there because I believe SACWA is going to uh try to get a a single consultant involved.
Already started working our end.
Or or Jack can just do it, I guess. That would be fine, too.
Gathering, I'm gathering what they're going to need for the to put it together because we got to work with the LEPC and I said on the LEPC, so.
Uh, 127, cross connections. We touched on that a little bit, cross connections, you know, um, again, a state requirement. Um, more and more residential's are getting impacted by that. I've got Hydro Tor- Hydro Corp producing uh some reports for us on that so that we can keep track of things. Um, but it pretty much is is turnkey, so they're they're going into businesses and conducting those inspections and to protect the public water system. We've got medical expenses here. Um, I think we've moved a lot of our meeting and conference money into professional developments account, so that's probably why we don't see anything there. You see the bulk water um figures, um. Again, those are based on the one and a half percent increase that we're going to see from SACWA. So you can see those charges outlined there. Questions on 127, we'll move to 128. We got our bulk sewer sewer charges, which we've got two. We've got a sanitary charge and a storm charge. Both of those come from the Water Resource Commissioner, so that's the county. We get that bill um every month, so that's where we're paying for that. The non-residential surcharge, um, that's a GLEWA pass-through charge um for commercial customers. And then you can see the utilities, uh, the breakdown there. And we uh we split the utilities 50/50 with with our general fund. Questions on 128?
Hey Derek, before we move on, didn't some didn't some things change that we were going to talk about tonight? Because I didn't change anything in the budget. You know how you said some rates were changing? And we said we would go over it tonight.
So there were some changes to um the county numbers that they provided us. Lori, I think that is what you're referring to. The county had some late, some late figure changes um to storm and sanitary, and I think I think the storm charge uh really didn't change much. One of them didn't change very much, Lori, but another one did. I I don't have those numbers in front of me, Lori, but I know we, I sent the email out.
Right, we said we would talk about it uh during the, because I had already sent all the reports out, so I think that you, did you change on water sales? Did you change that amount?
I don't think it was ever changed, Lori, from my recollection.
No, we were going to leave the revenue alone, Lori, because we assumed it this will actually be a lower overall increase in water rates than we had last year. And my main concern was the working capital element, which we're still going to maintain somewhere around 4 million, which um part of what one of my slides had yesterday was making sure that we were still in that three to four million range for working capital, which uh is just a fancy term for current assets minus current liabilities. And we're still in that three to four million range, which is where they wanted us to be uh while still doing these projects. So we and anticipated leaving the revenue alone and then since, you know, we the the, until they approve rates, we decided to leave the expenditures where they're at, too. So we may have some amendments during the year on the expense side. Um, but we were going to leave the revenue amounts where they were.
Okay, so we're not changing anything from that email that Derek sent out that day?
Right, we anticipated that if if we need to down the road to amend the expenditures, but uh for now, I think the budget numbers are good.
Okay, sorry Derek, continue.
Right, that's all right. Page 129 of the PDF. Office equipment rental, professional development, so this is where we've um take care of a lot of our water license charges. Um, I think we've got four employees that have signed up of late to take the test um in July, so I'm, that's a good sign. We're hoping that more of our staff can obtain those water licenses and there's different grades to those, so you can continue to move up. And so this is where we pay for the testing as well as any training that's necessary for that. Here's the construction side of that. Um, the next Harvard project, that's where you see that 1.5 million coming in. Um, so that will correspond with the road millage to uh to hopefully fund that project. Um. Building improvements, here's the big one, the DPW office, so. We've bid out our office project and, you know, unfortunately, the numbers came back pretty high. Uh, we had 10 bidders and that's a wonderful thing and and the numbers were pretty tight, which tells you that you know, that the it was a good spec, it was a good plan, it's just right now pricing is high for everything. Um, we're looking at a couple of options and I know um City Manager Baumgarten is uh thinking of some other options as well, potentially design build options, but um we've got to decide our our track on this uh fairly soon. We've, the three lowest bidders, we did reach out to them to see if they could do some value engineering for us. And the sign of the times, unfortunately, two out of the three said, um the price isn't going down, it's going up. They backed out. Um, one of the three low bidders is still willing to work with us if that's what we want to do. Um, but another option is we we bid it out again. Uh, potentially next win or two, that's an option to see if if the pricing starts to stabilize. I mean, who's to say uh where things are going to go, but material prices, as everybody has heard, are through the roof right now, so. We've got the placeholder in the budget here, um, 850,000, so um that's where that's where we're designating that work. We're certainly hopeful that that this project can move forward. I know it's one that we've talked about for several years. So it is what it is, I guess, but. And then we've got some miscellaneous equipment as you roll down this list, um. You know, new aero board, um, some new AMR antennas, as well as the usual items as I move to page 130. Vehicle wise, um we've got a telehandler. Um, I've been kicking, you know, my vehicle kind of down the road, but I think we need to start moving on that at some point. So that's in the budget as well. And then computer software. Questions on 129 and 130? I know there's a lot there. Anything? All right. The next section is our storm sewer fund. This would be page 132 of the PDF version. So this is where we allocate um the overtime, that's for uh clearing storm drains. You know, the thought would be after we added all the additional restricted covers that we're going to have some more time with this. Um, you know, it's been pretty dry of late, so it's been pretty quiet there, but um we did add all of the additional restricted covers, so um, we do expect to get more after-hours calls relative to uh clearing those drains. And then this is where we also pay for our storm flow. So as I mentioned earlier, the county bill is split between sanitary and storm. And so this is where we are paying for the storm flow.
Eric, there's a bad number in that memo line. I think it's supposed to be a decimal point or something in there, missing 147668076, I think.
Yes, it's been fixed. I fixed it, thank you.
Oh, okay, good. Thanks, Lori.
Yeah, I think you sent me an email or I got your email on it from someone.
Yeah, it was me. I forgot. I forgot that I got it. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Questions on storm? Page 134. And that's um our annual sewer lining program, so we've settled on 400,000 a year, so we're able to do a little more than a mile of uh structural sewer lining each year. We're actually waiting for Granite to get back in town to finish up uh this fiscal year's work. They've done the phase one uh portion of that and they'll be coming back to do phase two and then we'll have another uh another mile structurally lined in the city of Berkeley, so. Anything else? It got awful quiet. Questions, comments?
A lot of the stuff, you know, that you mentioned, Derek, on the past couple of pages are things that we have talked about for for a number of years and it's it's nice to see some of those finally coming through, but um, there's just, I mean, there's there's obviously an incredible amount of of detail and import on your budget in particular, and I know we're not, we're not quite wrapped up yet. Um, but we've, you know, spent a lot of time looking at these things, and I'm sure you and Sean and Mark uh have certainly fielded uh your share of of questions uh to this point.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I I think that I think that's about it from my end.
Yeah, I didn't even realize that. I thought we had a couple more pages, but then I looked at them and I mean, there there are pages that are, there's probably not a ton to discuss. Well, I thank you again, as I mentioned, you and Sean and everybody else who's very willing to answer questions, questions from council, questions from residents, uh making sure everybody understands. Um, and also includes questions from Jack, which are sometimes a little uh, a little more specific variety than some of the others. But you do have those answers and it's incredibly important, you know, your crew. The COVID didn't necessarily stop anybody in your crew from having to do the work that they did and they were able to continue to uh to keep our city running smoothly, keep our roads and sidewalks and trees and you know, water, everything moving and we're certainly appreciative of that. And I think your budget, you know, the the most disappointing thing is not potentially being able to to renovate uh the building. Okay, that's that's something that we have talked about for a number of years and and just for you know, the time and effort, it it would be deserving and fitting for for the crew and the staff to to have a building that was you know, certainly more efficient, um a little bit. Just made him a little happier coming in and and walking through and and that's um the kind of the feeling that's in there right now and it's it's a huge expenditure, but it's something we planned for and that's unfortunate that we may not be able to do it. So I'm hopeful that some of the solutions that you mentioned, we will able to to find a way. Um, the yard, you know, all of those things, things we've been talking about for a long time, improving. And I was really hopeful that this was going to be the year we were going to be able to do it. And to to not have that is abilities a little bit frustrating, but want to thank you guys for everything that you've done, for answering all of the questions. Uh, Council, are there any final questions for for DPW? No. All right, well, thank you, Derek and Sean. We've got six more departments to cover. Um, we are through four and we are coming up on our third hour, so we're going to take a brief uh intermission here. We'll take a five to six minute if you need a break. 8:51, 8:52, uh, we will try to get rolling again with finance and treasury. All right? Okay. We'll get back going in just a couple of moments here. Does appear that we have really thinned the herd for these last six departments. A lot of our friends have decided they have had enough fun for this evening. All right. We will now move to finance and treasury. Mark, I assume you're going to handle this. What page should we start at?
Finance is page 15.
Whenever you are ready.
Right. Let me scroll back there myself. I'm still in water here. All right. The page is I'd like to call it the well-oiled machine expense. Our full-time employees still sue Lori and myself. He he continued to function very well. Lori's done a yeoman's job working from home. And again, I'm extremely pleased that we got this budget in front of you. Never an easy task, but we're happy to have it done. And Sue makes sure everybody gets paid, employees and vendors. So I'm pretty happy that we've been able to work our way through somewhat behind the scenes, a little bit more than some of the other departments, but and then I will give Brian tons of credit because he has not missed much time, including when he had COVID himself. So but this is just three of us scrolling down. We put some information under consultant. We have our Gatsby annual reports that GRS does for us. They are our actuarial firm. We do have new Gatsby. In fact, Lori and I just got email from Keith from Plant Moran. They're going to give us some free of charge training on Gatsby 84, which is the new Gatsby pronouncement for fiduciary responsibility. So we'll learn how that works. So we've got some money in there for some of our annual Gatsby reports. We've got the ClearGov budgeting, operating budget, which Lori and I will get trained on and officially the operating budget will kick in by first, but we're working on the digital budget, which as I mentioned last night, we should have at least a draft copy here in the next couple of weeks and we'll, we'll work to make that document look great. And then we have our ADN administration. That's our dental and optical coverage. And then this be net tricks expense I do expect at some point with the ClearGov addition that this will drop off. If not this year, next year for sure. So we'll get some savings there to offset some of that ClearGov cost because they'll do our transparency and our dashboard. Scrolling to page 17. Again, not much has changed. We did, I did scale back that legal services. I went back and looked occasionally. There's something directly correlating to the finance department that's of a legal nature, but we have not used that that figure to what we've been budgeting. So we had 3,000 in the current year budget and we've only used 248 of that. So we scaled that back to 500. And going down to professional development, we've got our MGFOA. They've continued to try and offer online wherever possible. I've got a possibility this year, but we kind of put that in there just in case. We're certainly hoping we're back to in person, but if not, we'll we'll do the online version. And then also the ClearGov training for the digital budget and then the operating budget. And then Dan Hills worked with us on the BSNA training, trying to get those organized so that everyone understands the prominent software that we utilize for our accounting and all of our other functions. So we've got some training in for that as well. And that's pretty much it unless anyone has any questions on those two pages for finance.
Reggie, go ahead.
So I'm just, you mentioned BSNA and I know that I don't even begin to understand all the capabilities of that software, but I know that there are many modules and components. I guess percentage wise, what's available to finance? How, how much of a percentage do you utilize in the day-to-day stuff? Or if there's another way that you want to talk about that, that's fine too.
Well, we are going to add the fixed assets component. Lori and I agree. We utilize Excel right now for fixed assets, but it's extremely tedious and difficult to input the assets in on an annual basis, figure out depreciation and that was due to some of the Gatsby changes. So we're gonna, we'll, we'll start from scratch on fixed assets, but BSNA has a fixed assets module available to us. So Lori and I are going to train on that. In fact, just before the end of this fiscal year, we'll train on that in June. But all the other, how everything else ties together, including the piece that'll go with ClearGov for budgeting, how we can tie all that together. So and we're hoping the directors get something out of some of these trainings as well because they utilize some of the, the other functions. It would be nice. I'm sure Teresa would enjoy it if we could tie in BSNA with, with their software, but it's unique. So there's not a lot of tie in there. And then I've been communicating with Matt Church as well for the library to try and get some of the receipting end when they're back open to the public, maybe we can tie in cash receipts there to make things a little bit easier. So they're not constantly having to bring us money for deposits. So there, yeah, there are options for us out there. BSNA is a great product. We're, we probably hit or barely scratched the surface of what all it can do. But we're trying to get more information at Matt's encouragement every time we, we get the opportunity and, and in the last year we've done that.
So you're gradually bringing, bringing more things into BSNA then?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I think you answered my question. I just want to restate it to make sure on the ClearGov budgeting part supplements BSNA. It's not replacing it.
Right. It's, it will, it will absolutely supplement. We'll still use BSNA budgeting. The good thing will be once we get ClearGov in the first year budget in through the operating budget, you'll have a lot more capability there. So we won't, we won't need the BSNA product as much, but it'll tie in with ClearGov so that we'll continue to, you know, to have a budget. You know, it'll be a little, it'll be less work for Lori and the BSNA end of things and the directors as well because they'll, they'll be utilizing the other ClearGov product more. And then as we get that established, I think everyone's going to be, you know, really happy, including the residents, because you'll, they'll have a lot more capability with what you can see budget wise and what we have now from BSNA. So it will complement and work with it. And there is a possibility at some point that the ClearGov product, you know, will kind of take the place as far as a budget goes. We'll have a basic budget that we run through BSNA, but then we'll have the main budgeting project as ClearGov.
Okay, thank you.
Then I will scroll through to, if we go to page 20, that is treasury. Personnel there, it's Brian and Phyllis. Phyllis has stayed on and continues to assist. I think Brian's finally allowing Phyllis to do a little bit more. Brian's very hands-on, always has been, I think always will be with what he does, but we hate to see when he takes a week off, he comes back and does the week that he missed. And we're trying to get him to allow Phyllis to do that. And I think he's going to do that now. We're also going to utilize Ashley in that, in that realm as well. So he'll have some, some confidence when he's gone that the work's actually going to get done and into his satisfaction. So that's the personnel there. As we scroll down professional development, I know, I know Brian's hoping to do a national treasurer's if that should pop up here. And in, you know, the post-COVID world, if that opportunity arises, we might ask council for an amendment there, but I know he hasn't been to the national conference. So it's something he would like to do. So, you know, as things evolve here, hopefully he'll get an opportunity to do that. So we might be amending that number, but for now that's the Michigan municipal training for treasurer. So he's going to try and utilize what he can there on an annual basis. And then I usually do at least one online course. I mean, I've said this before, I have the treasurer title, but Brian does the work.
Mark, I noticed something here that maybe it's under City Hall now, but there's no postage or mailing expense. I was wondering if maybe Brian wasn't going to mail tax bills anymore.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned that, Jack. I was actually just texting Lori a bit ago. We missed that. It should actually be in there. He's now utilizing Oakland schools. They do the mailing, stuffing of the bills and everything. Again, it was a tedious process in-house and there was still a cost, but Oakland Schools does it for just about the amount that you used to be able to do it yourself and, and they handle it all. So that, that's something he just tried this year and we missed putting it in. So we do need to add 21, 22, and 22, 23, the $4,000 back in. We did miss that. So we'll make sure we get that put back in. I texted him as well and Brian being Brian, he responded. So even after hours, I apologize for bothering him at, at home, but he was able to respond and, and say that, yep, it should be there. So we did miss that. Any other questions on page 20? All right. And then page 21 is it, I think. Yeah. So that takes care of finance and treasury.
Any additional questions on finance and treasury? All right. Well, it looks like you did a great job there, Mark and Lori certainly getting everything prepared and Brian making sure we're ready to go and Sue making sure everybody gets paid, continuing to do incredible work from, from home. We can now move into the court building fund.
Really quick, Mark, before we move there, is there this coronavirus expenses? Is there going to be anything carrying into next?
I don't anticipate unless we still have, you know, we're using those, those misters. So there could be some. I put in what I had expected that we'll get reimbursed the expenses and from what we understand, even from the art monies that will have a couple of years. I don't anticipate any, but if we have any though, the coronavirus expenses would be offset by funds that we would hope to receive from the federal government. So they would be offset. I didn't put anything in there because I'm just not sure anticipating what will, what we might need. So I left that zero for the next couple of years. But the good news is if there is expenses, I believe we'll get reimbursed through the grant for those expenses. Matt, do you want me to address the court building fund or?
I'm more than happy to do so.
Okay.
As we've been discussing, we don't have a lot of revenue in there. We have pretty much, pretty much ended the contractual agreement that we had with the court system. There was a phase, a phase out period in which we could still continue to see revenue there. As you'll note, there's very little at this point. The only thing left now is the investment earnings on the monies that we have accumulated for that account. I'm sorry, that, I should go back to the start. That's on page 110. Yeah, that's 110 of the PDF document. So again, 3100 is the only revenues that we anticipate for, for these monies. The main way, as we've been discussing throughout, that we would like to utilize that would be to transfer monies out of that particular account, hopefully close it out. But essentially dedicate these monies to improvements around City Hall. As we talked about last night, we have budget for this amount or for this transfer is about $300,000 in safety and workflow updates in and around City Hall. That will, that will probably leave a balance in here. We have the, but we'll tailor the transfer at the end of the year to the actual expenditures that were, that take place. There's a chance it'll leave a credit in this account or a remaining balance in this account that will then address to the HVAC improvements for the 22, 23 budget year. But essentially within the next two years, we should see this fund balance brought down to zero for this account.
This shows only, you're transferring 390,000 and last night you said 300,000.
Right. So the, what's shown in here is a $390,000 transfer. The general fund is showing to be in receipt of that. But we only have an expenditure of $300,000 budgeted for expenses. So there, again, it will, will tailor, will adjust this according to what that expenditure is. But we do, we do anticipate there to be some leftover coming in the next budget year for, you know, we'll be talking about next year during this work session as well.
Thank you.
That's it. Yeah, those are, this is a quick, a quick one. And then over the next couple of years, again, we'll, we'll just put this into the other category as we see it slowly fade off of the, the years previous.
All right. Then we can move into debt funds.
That happens even quicker. There is no debt.
That's, we've been waiting years for this. There is no, yeah, this is great.
That last payment was made last fall. So that whole mile bond is now paid in full or 11 mile bond. I don't, I can't keep track. I just know, I just know it's gone.
Yeah, we don't have to think about it anymore. I appreciate that. Capital improvements.
That one I will leave Matt or Lori.
Pardon me?
I said I can leave that one to Matt or Lori because that's a long document that you have to put together over years. So. I said I can leave that one to Matt or Lori, because that's a long document that you have to put together every year, so.
Okay, uh, well. Actually, I think they're talk, talking about three thirteen, um. Fund three thirteen and fund four seventy, which. Derek covered. I didn't know he was going to do them, so.
That's true, I, I was thinking capital improvement CIP, but you're correct, that, that is the three thirteen fund which Derek did cover.
But you could do the, uh, CDBG, which I don't know that that was listed for tonight.
And I think, I think Aaron covered that, because we're going to move, uh, money into park sidewalks, which is new, and then the other programs. CDBG wise are the usual Haven. Uh, large print books for the library and, um. And then the, uh, snow removal for seniors.
Look at how efficient we were. This evening, okay, we're, we're making some, some strong moves now. Fringe benefit funds. Fringe benefits fund, I should say. What page is that?
Uh, let me look it up, it's the fund number six ninety, let me look it up real quick.
One sixty-two.
One sixty-one. Okay.
And that's, uh, that's actually a fund set up years ago, I believe. Uh, David is the one, Sabuda, who sent, uh, set up that fund, good idea to. Try and advance fund. Uh, some of the buyout for retirees, if they have, uh. You know, vacation sick leave that, that gets bought out, um, that money's there to. Uh, soften the blow when those payments are made, so it's utilized from that funds, we do an annual. Uh, entry through our auditing process that adjusts the amount each year, there's an accrual. Uh, that Sue and Lori and I work on, uh, spreadsheet. That just says, uh, who's do what, and, uh, we take the adjustments to that fund. Uh, people who leave that have balances, you know, that, that aren't paid will fall off, and then new people adding in, so everyone's tracked. And then through that fund, we have, uh, we, we have about three hundred and it's. Very similar to the court building fund, there's about three hundred and ninety thousand in cash. Available in that fund and overall debts, if you had to pay. Um, everybody out is, you know, closer to seven hundred thousand, but you won't have to pay everyone out, because there. Uh, some of those, uh, leave hours are, have no cash value, so. But we record that anyway for auditing purposes, but that fund, uh. It's good to have, it's just a reserve, uh, if you need to pay somebody out who retires that has a balance, you can utilize those funds.
Any additional questions? Anything else on the fringe benefits fund, uh, Mark?
No, that's it for me.
All right, then let's move into a public safety pension fund, which looks like one sixty-six. Uh, through the PDF, you were one sixty-seven. Um, the actual document.
Yep, and that is the, uh, the trustee board. Uh, I, as I mentioned, I think in my PowerPoint that. There's a commitment that's been made to, uh, just like council's done with. Uh, the MERS pension to fund additionally when available. And, uh, we anticipate at least a two hundred thousand dollar payment in addition to. Um, I think just under the one, or just over the one million dollar payment that Gabriel Roder. Uh, has calculated for us, so. Um, we're, we're trying to move that pension fund back closer to the eighty percent that it was a few years ago. Again, we've made some funding changes, just like MERS has done. As a board and, um, you know, they, they, you have, uh. Public safety individuals on that board, and they certainly want to see that. That, uh, pension fund get back up close to eighty and then eventually. A hundred percent, but, uh, I think Louise anticipated in the last annual report that. Around about a fourteen-year plan with the, that's just with the contributions that they would recommend. And if we make advanced payments, it would be funded to a hundred percent sooner than that, so. Um, but that's, uh, that's the expenses each year, uh, I did find out and I will look into it. Uh, if the board's interested, that MERS offers, um, to provide. Uh, services even for three forty-five pensions, so. Uh, I, I didn't figure it would hurt to look if the board, if trustee board's interested in. In a cost comparison, because we have, uh, CAP trust now, it used to be Plant Moran Financial Advisors, they were. Uh, they moved over to CAP trust is the name of the company now who handles. Uh, the investment responsibilities, but, uh. I, I talked with Sue Feinberg for MERS and she said, you know, you can do a comparison, we won't. Charge you anything to do it, so if, if there's some fee savings there and the trustee board's interested, we could at least take a look. But, um, I think we're just over twenty million in the fund. Right now, if I remember correctly, Lori, I know Lori does the balancing on that, but. That leaves us, uh, I, I anticipate we'll probably be close to the mid-seventies as far as percentage funded. In that fund, we'll be, probably be close to seventy-four, seventy-five percent. And with the, and with the focus on getting back above eighty and then moving toward a hundred.
Any additional questions on the public safety pension fund?
I have a general question, what about OPEB? We haven't talked about that tonight, is that something that we need to address, or?
Um, the OPEB fund, the trust fund, the, the good news is when I filed the annual report required by the state. Uh, we moved out of the, um, the, the. What's the acronym, the? Plan.
Corrective action plan?
Yes, corrective action plan, CAP, uh, we moved out of. Uh, below, above the requirements for that, so th- they're still going to require us to, you know, file a report and stay on plan, but. The good news was, is the additional funding that council's committed to the last. A couple of years has, has moved us above the funding level, where we're no longer in corrective action. Uh, but if we continue to ant- anticipate that we'll. Extra money in on an annual basis, uh, that will just continue to move up, so that funding, we're well ahead, ahead of the Gabriel Roder. Report and plan, uh, that they, they gave the city a few years ago, so. Uh, that's some good news, we're, we're ahead of where we expected to be.
The level was only thirty percent, wasn't it?
Yeah, thirty-one, but the anticipation was to get to, uh, forty. And in, I think it anticip, did anticipate we'd get there until, like, twenty, thirty. And then, you know, funded, fully funded, I don't think till in the twenty forty. Range, but I think we'll be there sooner than that, so the additional funding certainly helps.
We're putting extra money in this year?
Yes, we'll put in, uh, about, I think I budgeted ninety thousand, we'll put that in again, so. And then if there's additional, uh, if there's additional funds from the public safety pension, because we also collect for their. Uh, OPEB for retirees, uh, we'll put that in as well, so there could be. Hundred thousand plus additionally going into that fund. And it all, it, it all helps.
It all helps, and we want to continue to stay ahead, we don't want to, you know, find ourselves, you know, getting. Comfortable thinking, okay, well now we're, we're not in a corrective action state, but. That doesn't mean that, you know, actuaries can't change numbers, assumptions can't change, investment earnings can't change, and, and find ourselves. Potentially back there, and then, you know, this, this council and prior councils have continued to. Make sure that that is a priority, so continuing to put more in. Then kind of the, the, the minimum requirement, I think is something that. We would at least, had been interested in the past, and I think we should at least have a discussion about again. Moving forward every year. That council, I see some heads nodding, but anybody have, okay, okay, all right. So that's something to, to take a look at, and as we, you know, see where our fund balance is, and then you look at our, our fund balance policy and then where we want to see versus. Where we are, potentially that's one of those places as well, where we can. Maybe funnel some, some extra dollars just to make sure that we are staying ahead of pace. Um, in honoring. Those promises and obligations that we made in the past. Okay? All right, well, in hindsight, that break at eight fifty-three was, uh, a little bit on the late side. And did not anticipate those, uh, next to six, taking, uh, twenty minutes. Uh, I thought we had a little bit more, more action ahead of us. Um, next, next time we do this, Matt, we're going to separate public works in the back half of. Day two, and we'll put in a break, uh, before that, I, I apologize for the. Nearly three hours before you guys could, uh, could get up for, for just a minute, and normally in the work sessions, I know residents. Whether they're there watching this, you know, typically that's, that's in the public safety room, and you know, we've got some snacks and some other things, and you can kind of stand up and stretch for a minute, so. It's a little different when you're, you're in the chair and in front of the computer, as we've been the last couple of years, um, and. You know, i- it doesn't, it might not seem that, that council's, you know, asking questions on every single line item. Um, it is not to be considered as we're not, you know, engaged or paying attention, as I've, I've mentioned a number of times, these are things that we look at. Consistently, we ask questions as soon as these things come up to make sure that we. Uh, understand, and, and we've asked the department heads. Um, as they're going through each budget to really highlight. You know, any changes, um, anything, you know, that's potentially new, anything that's potentially decreasing, just to make sure that we're really. Highlighting those things, there are so many of these numbers that are. Carry forward are similar on a year, year in, year out basis. Uh, but we really want to make sure that we highlight it and, and give council the, the opportunity to, to ask questions and. Uh, make sure that we're getting the responses. That the residents have, have asked us about, or that we personally just want to know a little bit more and get a little bit more background. I do think something that will help us as well in the future. As Matt mentioned yesterday. Uh, built into, you know, budget, the, the coming budgets. The, you know, work sessions, the, the visioning session, the emission vision, what are our goals, and just really getting very clear. Uh, the vision, um, for, for the community for the next few years, because again, that's going to drive all the decisions that we make. Um, not only, you know, in our day-to-day meetings or. Bi-weekly meetings, but also as we, we come to this budgeting, very important for directors as well to, to, to know the vision. Um, and I want to thank all the directors. Again, this year. Last year, they had at least some in person before, uh, things got shut down, but this year, most of it has all been, been virtual, people are working from home. Communicating from home, the process certainly wasn't as smooth and as easy to. It's a handle, if you can just walk, you know, go to, go to the building or walk down the hall, uh, to make sure that, that things are consistent. Um, and I, I do appreciate the, the time and care and able to, to get to where we're at today, was it perfect? No, or there's some things we need to clean up and can clean up in the future, yes, and I'm confident that. We will be able to, to do that. Um, but this is a massive undertaking, as I mentioned, that happens, you know, January rolls around, it's, it's budget season for the departments. Uh, to get to this point where, where we can. Have these conversations, um, and, and Mark and Lori, all the, the work that you've done. You know, primarily from home, trying to coordinate everything, get everything into. The format where we can. Read it and, and discuss it and have questions about it. And there's always going to be a, you know, correction here, there, and that's why we do this, that's why this is a work session. To talk about things, to identify any places where we want to make changes, identify any. Corrections, errors, so that when we come back to the meeting next week. Uh, we're ready to, to present a budget and, you know, approve a budget that is reflective of. Our priorities and the residents' priorities, our communities' priorities as we move forward as a community. Anybody else, any, um, closing? Remarks on the budget sessions, Jack?
I'd just like to say thanks to Mark and Lori, because as we've seen it over the years. It seems like the budget gets better every year, and I know they put a lot of work into it. And we ask a lot of questions, but, uh, part of that is because. We want to make sure that the residents might also understand it as, as they watch this later on, but congratulations on a great job, uh. I really appreciate it, I've seen, it might, this is my tenth budget, I think, is, is a. Great improvement, so thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, that's appreciated.
Any other, um, comments before we close the work session? Normally, I mean, we'd be playing, well, we'd, we'd finish up the softball on a, on a normal, now, now, that COVID year, unfortunately, that wasn't a reality. I know where the city employees and staff would be right now, we'd be out celebrating our victory. Uh, we'll just celebrate it on our own this year, because we do still have the trophy, COVID did not take that away from us. And, uh, hopefully next year, we will be able to have Berkeley Days following, um, our budget sessions and, and be able to enjoy that again with our community. I want to thank everybody for their time, uh, their diligence and their thoughtful questions today. And with that. I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Motion to adjourn by Mayor Pro Tem Dean with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Traback?
Yes.
The May twelfth, two thousand twenty-one. Second budget work session is adjourned.